Okay, Madam Mayor, the livestream has begun. The meeting is yours.
Mayor at 7:07 PM.
Thank you, thanks. Again, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Trustees for the Village of Woodridge for this Thursday, August 20th, 2020. The time is 7:08 PM. Going to call the meeting to order and ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Abbott. Trustee Abbott. Trustee Crusack. Trustee Page.
Present.
Trustee Hendricks.
Present.
Trustee Blair.
Present.
Trustee Martinez. Trustee Martinez, you're on mute. Recall Trustee Abbott. Recall Trustee Martinez, you're still on mute.
Clerk Kagan, this is Administrator Stonehitch. Trustee Abbott, we're getting him Zoom here. He's having a little difficulty.
Okay. I see Trustee Martinez, but I don't have a verbal response from him yet.
Clerk Kagan, I think we can take notice that.
Very good. Notice is taken. Trustee Martinez is online. Madam Mayor.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. If you would please join us in a moment of silence and in dedicating this evening's meeting in the memory of Marv Bailey, Marv and his wife, longtime Woodridge residents and charter members of the Woodridge United Methodist Church. We send our deepest sympathy to the Bailey family and to the United Methodist Church of Woodridge's family. After a moment of silence, we will follow with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask this evening that our audience members and our village board lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance
to the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And now going to move to the public comment portion of our meeting. And I would like to ask staff if we've received any written public comments regarding any items that do not appear on this evening's agenda. And we may have to wait just a moment, so I apologize. And let me also just go ahead and move to the next item because if you are here this evening for the proposed Lamont Road Office Warehouse Development Agenda item, we thank you very much for being here or being online. And please know that you will have the opportunity to speak this evening and address the village board, but I would ask that that portion will come up when we're actually in that part of our meeting, which will be shortly held, okay? So just bear with us, but we will get right to that as soon as we're done with our first portion of our meeting, okay? If there is anyone else, though, that would like to address the board this evening on items that are either on the agenda or not, is anyone wanting to do that in person here this evening? Okay. Okay. Hello, good evening. It's good to see you.
Great. Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm here to make a follow-up comment regarding the last time I came up.
Introduce yourself for the record, your name.
Oh, I'm so sorry. My name is Savannah McKee. I live in the Seven Bridges area of Woodridge. I'm here today to make a public comment regarding advocating for a police social worker. If you tuned into the last meeting, I came up and talked a little bit about the need for a police social worker in assisting victims of domestic violence. But today, and I know that the focus of this meeting is going to be a little bit different than what I'm talking about today, but I think it's important to still go forward in advocating for this position. So last my focus on D V, but I'd like to touch on a couple other scenarios where police social workers are vital. They help with victims of other violent crimes as well as mental health crisis response. And you know, this is important because police social workers, they're experts in the resources that are available in our community. And I think Woodridge is in a very unique position since our town is regions that are located in DePage County, Cook County, and Will County. And trying to navigate that yourself is very difficult. And I think we're very privileged to have an abundant amount of resources and agencies that can serve victim witnesses and those who need access to like medication for mental health needs, but the social worker would be the person that could help navigate that and could make connections and really help the victim and empower them. Nonviolent, noncriminal calls to 911. And you don't have the opportunity to strengthen the relationship with the community and build long-term relationships relationships with these persons who are calling constantly for domestic violence-related calls or for mental health crises and really get to the bottom of the issue so that not allocating resources to those emergency responses. So what I'm just asking as we're entering this budget season that we consider that, I think, a great asset to our police department and in connection with our community, which I know is the goal of this department this season. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, do you know, I already asked about this evening.
I believe the mayor is muted.
There you go. Try again.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Page. So I did just check with our administrator to see if there were any other public comments that we've received that were in writing that do not appear on tonight's agenda, and we do not have any other items this evening. So, does staff have any written public comments that have been received that specifically relate to items on tonight's agenda aside from the Lamont Road proposed development? Thank you very much, Administrator Stonehitch. We will now go ahead and close the public comment portion of this part of our agenda, and we're going to move to our omnibus. Going to ask, please, for a motion to approve the omnibus agenda items A through C and acceptance of item D. A motion, please?
So, page.
Thank you, Trustee Page. Thank you, Trustee Blair, for the second. Is there a request for any item to be considered separately this evening? Hearing none, going to ask our administrator if you would please to review the omnibus items for the record for us.
I'm here. You're muted, Al.
Thank you.
Item A is Resolution 2020-69, so Resolution authorizing the mayor and village clerk to execute a certain amendment and six extension of the multi-tenant industrial building lease in 812 Lamont LLC, appearing September 1st, 2020 to August 31st, 2022. Item B is Resolution 2020-70, it's Resolution approving a one-year extension of the joint bid 2019-23 for Lombard Reeling Woodridge into Page County for sidewalk sawcutting with hard rock concrete cutters, Inc., for the 2020 season. Item C is Resolution 2020-71, it's a resolution extending the March 17, 2020 Emergency Proclamation through September 18th, 2020. And then the last item D of the council table registers, July 24th, 31st, August 7th, 2020, and the June credit card activity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if our clerk would please call the roll.
For the record, Trustee Abbott arrived at 7:17. Trustee Crusack.
Hi.
Trustee Page.
Hi.
Trustee Hendricks.
Hi.
Trustee Blair.
Hi.
Trustee Martinez.
Hi.
Trustee Abbott. Got to unmute yourself, Trustee Abbott.
Hi.
Trustee. Motion approved.
Thank you very much. Under presentation of communication and the mayor's report, I'm going to go ahead and forego my report for this evening so we can go ahead and begin our next part of our meeting. Administrator Stonehitch.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Cunningham. This evening, item A is ordinance 2020-26 is an ordinance granting a final plat of subdivision consolidation, a final site plan approval granting other relief for the properties located at 8110 Lamont Road, 8114 Lamont Road, 8118 Lamont Road, and E200 Dunham Road. Director Porter will have a presentation, and just for the benefit of those in the audience on Zoom, the sequence of events will be that we will have staff presentation first, followed by a presentation introduction by the applicant, and we will proceed to public comment. We will handle in-person public comment first, then we will go to those who are participating by way of Zoom for public comment, and then it'll go into board deliberation. Okay? Thank you. Director Porter.
Thank you, Mayor, Village Board. Thank you. Good evening tonight, both our in-person and listening and viewing public. Mayor, respectfully, I need to request we will have our consulting engineer, Mr. Thomas Adamczyk, Adamczyk, excuse me, who's the PE and president of the James J. Benison Associates Firm. He is trying to access this meeting currently. He's having issues from his side trying to access, so he may dial in. He will be at the end of my presentation to provide an overview on some of the stormwater environmental and site traffic information you may have, questions you may have, excuse me. The applicant will present shortly thereafter, and due to the virtual nature and just the plethora of information we have, Village Planner Phil Green would also talk going to this meeting and assist with some document retrieval and commentary on the presentation as well.
Yes, thank you very much.
So, as you know, this is consideration of a final plat of subdivision or consolidation and final site plan approval and the granting of other relief for the properties located at 8110 Lamont, 8114 Lamont, 8118 Lamont Road, and 8200 Dunham Road. Next slide. The subject property is located on the west side of Lamont Road, north of 83rd Street as outlined. The subject property consists of four parcels in question, and two of them contain single-family homes. Next slide. A little bit of corridor history. A portion of this particular subject property at hand was annexed to the village in 1991, and the remainder was annexed in 1999. The properties have been zoned office research and light industrial since that time of annexation. As part of the 1991 annexation, a TIF district was also established in order to assist the developer at the time, the Alter Group, with the land acquisition and construction of an approximate 260,000 to 360,000 square foot office warehouse building. The TIF district was later repealed in 1998 when the development did not move forward. Next slide. Here's a graphic depiction of developments along the Lamont Corridor. As you'll see on the Woodridge side of Lamont Road, you'll see the 90,000 square foot Cube Smart, which was constructed in 2015. You'll see just under 106,000 square foot multi-tenant building that was constructed in 2000. That's the 8102 Lamont Road building. You'll see the 20,000 square foot Midwest Babbin facility that's currently under construction. You'll see the proposed CA Ventures facility at, well, at the time, 250, just at under 250,000 square foot, and that's the spec warehouse building. And then you'll see on the opposite side, in the city of Darien, a 185,000 square foot warehouse built to spec building occupied or anchored, excuse me, by tile and top. And again, that's in Darien. Next slide. Development proposal that's up for consideration tonight. The applicant, CA Industrial Holdings LLC, is requesting a final plat of subdivision and final site plan approval to construct a now 242,200 square foot facility. Please note that this building size has been reduced yet again as of last night, and I'll speak about that further in the next upcoming slides. They're seeking again a speculative office warehouse building with dock and parking improvements and three surface detention basins to be located on the southern, eastern, and western portions of the site. The applicant is also proposing to construct a 14-foot screening wall to be located adjacent to the dock area on the western portion of the site and approximately now 13-foot berm. Again, as a note, height of the berm has also been increased as of last night, and I'll speak to that shortly, along both the west and the portion of the south property lines with an additional 10-foot seat of fence to be located on top of the berms, which will assist with the provision of additional screening. Next slide. To encourage office uses, in conjunction with our permitted uses within this ORI district, our village code requires at least 5% of the gross floor area to consist of office space for each tenant buildout. The village code also outlines the prohibited uses in our ORI district, which includes motor vehicle repairs, utility yards, outdoor machinery storage and retail, and cartage and express facilities. The village code defines cartage and express facilities as any building, parking lot, and related structure whose principal use is one or more of the following: the routing of trucks, the receipt and immediate dispatching of goods, short-term storage, which is incidental to the primary function of receipt and dispatching of goods, or the parking or storage of trucks, trailers, and other vehicles that accommodates the simultaneous loading and unloading of trucks. And those, again, are prohibited uses within this zoning district. Next slide, please. As stated, this is the revised site plan that was revised by the applicant as of last night. So I'm just going to go over the highlights. The applicant has reduced some of the number of dock positions proposed from 50 to 48. The village code provides for a restriction of 300 feet. The loading dock areas must be with 300 feet from the residential boundary. The applicant is self-imposing a 337-feet distance requirement or restriction from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM, when our code only calls for 300 feet. I believe this font is getting too small for me. I believe that this distance up north is now 237 feet. It was previously 209 feet. Thank you, Phil, with the young eyes. I do appreciate you. Again, so the northern, as you can see with my cursor here, this was originally 209 feet from this property line. Now it's 237 feet. The applicant, again, has reduced the size of their proposed building to 242,400 square feet. From the time of concept to last night, they've now reduced their proposed building by 10,072 square feet. The applicant is also still proposing to construct a 14-foot screening wall to mask the particular turnaround area that's also a part of this restricted area. And as stated previously, the village code requires this particular distance to be 300 feet. They're self-imposing a much more restrictive requirement of 337 feet from the first unrestricted dock to the property line. When you add the unimproved width of the Dunham right-of-way, this building is now, this unrestricted area is now 403 feet from the residential boundary. Those are just some of the highlights of the changes of this particular site plan. Next slide, please. Here's a view of the west half of the proposed building when it comes to landscaping. The applicant will provide a total of 295 shade trees, 84 evergreen trees, and 1,529 shrubs throughout this proposed development. Again, please don't mistake this. This is the required landscaping that is different from the tree preservation plan that is outlined in our code. Next slide. And this is the east view. And this is where the plantings will be situated. This is the eastern view. The plan was just way too large for the slide, so we had to cut it up, east to west views, and this is the east view, a budding up against Lamont Row. And again, you can see the various plantings, which will be a mix of the shade trees, evergreens, and shrubs. Thank you. Next slide, please. And then here is a breakdown of the bulk requirements, and this has been modified to accommodate the change in the size of the building and some of the setbacks. So, the village's code for an ORI district requires a building height for this type of building, might I add, to be 40 feet. The proposed development comes in at 48.5 feet. The front setback required per code will be 63 feet. The proposed development will offer 200 feet. The north and south interior setbacks are required to be 30 feet per code. There are 80 feet to the north, 306 feet, and 140 feet to the south, respectfully. There's two variations due to the imperfect propping line to the south. It's not a perfect box. The rear setback, they're required to have 58 feet. They're providing 237 feet. And then we get into our parking lot landscape setbacks as required by code. To north, they're required to have 10. They're proposing 10. To the east, they're required to have 25 feet. They're providing 130 feet. To the west, they're required to have 20 feet. They're providing 150 feet. To the south, they're required to have 20 feet. They're providing 10 feet. And then with respect to loading area distance per performance standards as outlined in the village code, the village code requires 300 feet from a loading dock area. They're providing a total of 403 feet, as recently stated. And with respect to maximum building coverage, the village code would allow this building, this particular development, excuse me, to cover 50% of the site, which means that they could go much larger in size with the building. They're now coming in at 32% maximum building coverage. Next slide, please. What relationship to height is, it's important to note that the Village of Woodridge does not calculate height vertically, meaning from the roof to the foundation. This is an excerpt of the grading plan that the applicant had to submit as a part of their engineering plans. These plans are massive, so I was only able to provide you with the portion of closest to Mont, which is where the calculation is based off of. So this is the most important part of that plan. Staff has to take the front setback lines, as you see denoted by those two red dots, and we take the average slope. So you calculate the elevations of slope to get an average grade of 771 feet. When you go to the highest point, the highest point of the slope is actually off of this page, but it will be 819.5 feet. When you subtract that average grade of 771 feet from 819.5 feet, you get a height of 48.5 feet. So although the building that will be, is proposed for construction is only 38 feet in height, due to the way the village calculates grade or height, excuse me, it comes in at 48 and a half feet. Next slide, please. And lastly, there are four points of deviations or relief from the code. The building height, the code calls for 40 feet for this type of building, and this coming in at 48.5 feet. South landscape setback, they're seeking a 10-feet relief. The screen wall height, they're requesting relief to provide additional screening. Our code says they can only put up a 10-foot fence. They want to put up a 14-foot fence to, again, help to screen and to be better neighbors. The foundation landscaping, the applicant was requested to put in a sidewalk by staff to provide pedestrian access to the sidewalk that's adjacent to the proposed development, excuse me. Staff felt that that was much more important than flowers around the foundation. So this, this part of relief is also sought from the code, excuse me. Next. Next slide, Phil. So that concludes my portion of the staff presentation. Again, Mr. Tom Adamczyk, PE and president of James J. Benison Associates, which is one of the village's third-party engineering firms, is here to talk about stormwater management, provide an environmental overview, and to provide information on site traffic that will be generated by the site, and be able to answer all your questions to mayor and elected officials. Thank you. Tom? Tom, you're on mute. There you go.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Tom. Go ahead.
All right, my name is Tom Adamczyk. I am president of James J. Benison Associates, the reviewing engineers for this project, and I'm here to talk a little bit about the, as Kim had mentioned, stormwater management, some of the environmental aspects and issues and site traffic. I'll lead off with stormwater management. The development's located at a spot where it straddles a watershed divide between the Ward's Creek watershed and the Lily Cash Creek watershed. The proposed stormwater drainage system will comply with the village stormwater management requirements in that the areas that drain to Lily Creek watershed and the areas that drain towards Creek watershed will be maintained. So the site drains in multiple directions. For the Ward's Creek portion of the watershed, the site will drain to the existing storm shore that's located in the parkway on the west side of Lamont Road at the northeast corner of the site. The Lily Cash watershed is divided up into two parts. There's a small section at the south entrance driveway to the site that will drain to the the Lamont Road pavement as it currently does. And then the third outfall location is at the southwest corner of the site where a new storm shore will be put in to collect the remainder of the Lily Cash watershed drainage area on site to convey it south to the existing storm shores along 83rd Street. The storm water management design was designed for the 100-year storm event using the latest bulletin 75 rain Using the latest bulletin seventy five rainfall data, which is was recently released earlier this year. The stormwater detention will be provided in three dry bottom detention basins. And those will hold the water for the period of time with a restricted release rate of. A tenth of a C F S per acre in accordance with in accordance with the stormwater management ordinance. As I said, there's there will be no diversion of stormwater runoff between the watersheds. Everything that falls within the Lily Cash watershed will drain towards Lily Cash Creek. And likewise with words creek, it will drain. Those areas will drain to words creek. The dry bottom detention basins are also providing a secondary function as a post management. Post construction best management practice. The basins will be planted with native landscape plantings on the bottom of the basin. The plantings provide two functions. They serve to filter pollutants from the stormwater runoff. And then the root systems for the plants also provide. Enhanced infiltration of the stormwater that's being detained in the basin to reduce. The pollutants as well. For the site also includes five small isolated depressional wetlands. Now, the location of the site is at the top of the watershed. It's at a high spot. These are small areas that total about point five acres. And the those wetlands were reviewed by the Army Corps of Engineers and they were determined that. As isolated wetlands, they're not subject to federal regulation. So the regulation. Of the wetlands defaults back to the village ordinance, which is based on the DuPage County Stormwater Management Ordinance. The wetlands were determined to be regulatory wetlands, but not critical wetlands. The DuPage County Regulatory Review determined that the development could not reasonably be developed without these wet these. Reasonably be developed maintaining these wetlands. And given the hardship, the county ordinance allows the applicant to pay fee in lieu of. Replace of replacing the wetlands on site. The wetlands, the fee in lieu is a program that allows. A petitioner to pay into a bank. That's used for and the funds are used to create wetland improvements within the watershed. And the the. The mitigation, the amount that's paid in is the cost to replace the wetlands. At a ratio of one to one point five. In other words. It's creating the wetland banking will create fifty percent more wetland function than the existing wetlands on site. In addition to the wetland issues, the applicant also consulted with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. The I D N R pertaining to threatened and endangered species and habitat. The natural resources review by Eco Cat process through the I D N R identified. Protected resources that may be in the vicinity of the site. The I D N R evaluated the information and concluded that the effects are unlikely. And didn't require any special mitigation other than if in the future, if threatened or endangered species. Are found on the site, then it would trigger a reassessment at that time. Site traffic. Was performed in accordance with generally accepted traffic engineering practice. The. Site traffic that would be developed by the proposed warehouse was estimated based on trip generation rate data that was. Contained in the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. The manual contains a. A data base of trip generation studies throughout the nation for various types of land uses. And they have specific rates for the specific land uses such as the warehouse. The 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 I T E trip generation rates were used as the basis for doing the traffic analysis for the site. And now I'll talk a little bit more about the site access itself. The site is proposed to have two driveways, a north driveway, which is restricted to right turns only. The north driveway is Lamont Road, which is under the jurisdiction of DuPage County Department of Transportation. They're the ones that dictated how the access points would be laid out for the development. The south driveway is a full access driveway at the south end of the site. And that one will accommodate both the workers driving in their personal vehicles as well as. Trucks entering and exiting the site. The trucks will all enter and exit from the south driveway. That driveway is aligned opposite the entrance to the corporate center. Directly across the street, which that roadway is referred to as Lamont Road in Darien. And that that's an overall summary of the traffic. Traffic analysis.
Thanks, Tom. So that completes the the staff presentation, Mayor. So I don't know if you wanted to lead into the applicant's presentation at this moment?
Yes, I'd like to just ask the trustees if there's any questions up to this point. Okay, seeing no one. Um, yes, please, if we could go ahead and move to the developer presentation. Thank you.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes, please introduce yourselves and proceed.
Sorry, so I'm I'm Jim McGill, executive vice president here at C A Industrial and with me is.
I'm Ed Petula, I'm vice president at C A Industrial.
So thank you for finding time to put us to our presentation here. Before I we drill into a lot of details, and there's a lot of data here is, you know, I'm I'm actually. Hopefully I don't look like that on the on the Zoom, but you know, I'm fairly old and I've been doing industrial development for a long time with. With originally with McShane and Prologis, and I've done developments in Woodridge. But the reason I bring that up, and I was thinking about this, I. I've probably done, you know, twelve to fourteen projects that are next to residential to some degree. And with that is the reason I bring that up is that the the concerns that are brought up by the residents. Are concerns I hear whether I'm doing projects in any suburb of Chicago or in Texas or in California. They're all the same thing. And then. So it's it's the sightlines, it's noise and it's traffic. And the reason I bring that up is that. When we got involved in this project is what we're going to try to do is develop a project that provides as much mitigation we can. To this property. So there's very little, you know, I guess, issues or types of concerns the residents should have. So we're looking at all kinds of things on sightlines. We're looking at how we do sound attenuation. And then also we're doing the best practice with burming and fencing and screening. So we believe that we've done a very good job, or at least in our opinion, of trying to do this and really trying to mitigate any impact that. Would be to the residents. We obviously understand they live there and we want to be a good neighbor. That's very important to us. We want people to be happy with the project that we bring to our community. So I think, Phil, if you could go to, let's go to the site plan. We don't need to go through all the verbiage that I wrote. If we can go to the site plan, which is number, which is.
Our number nine.
Our number nine. Some reason the appendix doesn't match it, but but any event, so what I wanted to talk about and Kimberly did a good job already presenting this, so I'm not going to go through numbers after numbers, but. You know, we what we did, you know, late in the submitted here was we actually reduced our building square footage from two hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and forty two thousand square feet. And besides having a smaller building, what did that do? And we'll get into this a little more details in our presentation. What it does by basically reducing the length of our building by twenty eight feet. It allowed us to get twenty eight more feet of green space along the west property line. And what we're going to do with that was it allowed us to increase our berm height by roughly four and a half to five feet. And then so what that does, and we'll go into a sideline exhibit here. But for the property owners on the west, from where their property line is, that the between our berm. And between our cedar fence, which is ten foot tall, you're talking about a twenty five foot grade differential. So what does that do? Well, that basically means when you're standing in your backyard, you're not going to physically be able to see this building. Now that isn't taking into account all the heavy tree line you already have on Dunham Road. It doesn't take into account our trees that were panning on the burns, which is significant amount. But I'm saying when they go out there, you know, day one, there'll be very little of this building they can see. The other thing what it does too is obviously there's, you know, sound dissipates by distance. And sound also with attenuation is by having hard surfaces that deflect sound. So what do we try to do? Well, the further the building's back. If you look at again, as Kimmy brought up is, you know, our building is, you know, two hundred and thirty seven feet to the Dunham right away plus another sixty six feet. So when you when you start looking at actually where our first dock position is, the first dock position doesn't start till the first bay, which is forty feet. So you're really, you know, two hundred and seventy seven feet from the property line. Plus the sixty six feet. So you're, you know, over three hundred and thirty feet. I can do this math in my head, you know, basically from the property line. So it's a pretty significant difference or pretty distance. Also, too, and it's hard, we have so many lines on this drawing, so I kind of apologize, but so there's so one, we've talked about the fourteen foot. Screen wall. That is actually at the at the turnaround, they have basically the bull there. So that goes all the way down to the south there. And then, Phil, if you take it, it goes back to the east to the trailer spots. So that's always been, that was our, that was what was submitted to plan commission. We also now increased a screen wall, which is next, Phil, it's right next to the drive in door by the car parking on the west side. So if you go to drive indoors, the gray area right by the cul-de-sac.
Southwest.
The southwest corner. Yep, you can see a black line that there's another screen wall. No, it's up at the building. It attaches to the building.
Corner.
At the corner. Yeah, yeah. So it's what comes down there with the drive in door. So we've added that there. So that again provides more sound attenuation for the docks. The closer your hard surfaces to the noise, there's more of a deflection as noise. As further away, the noise, noise doesn't go in a straight line. It goes everywhere. So we put that in. Then the last thing we did since plant commission is. We already had the fence all along the property line, but we put, we extended the cedar fence all on the trailer storage. So that will be from all the trailers between the pond. And the trailer storage. So there'll be a ten foot cedar fence there, which again provides more sound attenuation. So the one that we did is, and I know that some of you seen, you know, a letter from the Village of Lockport about the project that I did down there when I was at Prologis, which is called Prologis Park three fifty five. So I did all the entitlement there. I was not there when they started grading, but I basically got all the zoning done, all the design done on that. But we worked with a group called Soundscape Engineering, which is basically a noise consultant. And within Lockport, which is the same thing we did here is we wanted to meet the most stringent standard, which is the Illinois Pollution Control Board, which I got to tell you before I hired them, I'd never heard of that before. But basically, in a nutshell, I don't want to go into a lot of detail on decimals, and I can't even explain octaves and frequencies. But basically, you're trying to say that that the decimal levels are never more than forty decimals. And I have a slide that but forty decimals is the sound of a refrigerator. And and from the letter that's in our presentation. From the the city of Lockport, they mentioned how how happy the residents were and how happy the village is and, you know, the very few of any complaints they get, especially in regards to noise. So we spent a lot of time making sure we provided all the sound attenuation. So with that, I guess the next thing is obviously is why don't we go real quick? Let's so let's just go through the slides here. So we will just, we'll go through these very quickly. If you can go through. This just shows the the heavy landscaping. What's we go to the next slide then? Slide eleven. Excuse me, what's the sideline studies here is again, this reflects the new berm. And again, we talked about how our berm is now five feet higher. So the the most important thing is the height of the cedar fence is seven hundred and ninety nine feet. The property line and not every property line along the west is seven seventy four. That's an average. So we didn't, we didn't do a sideline from every single home, but for for the average height there of where the resident would be. Our top of our fence is at seven seventy nine. That's twenty five feet difference. So you it's, you know, it's, you know, almost impossible to see the building. I know some residents have brought up, can you see the building from my second floor window? Yeah, with, you know, not taking account trees and all that. Yeah, you'll see some of the building. I can't tell you exactly what it is, but you know, you're going to see part of the building. But definitely from your backyard and from your patio, you're not going to be able to see the building. Again, not taking into consideration all the heavy landscaping trees already have on Dunham Road. So let's go to the next slide. If you could, Phil. And this is the the next slide is on the is the south. Did we switch that already? That's the south side. So the south side isn't quite as extreme there. The difference there is, you know, from the the property line is seven seventy one. Our top of our burn is seven eighty seven. So it's seventeen feet. So but there's also a fairly big, a big difference there between the current residential home on the southwest side to where the property lies a hundred and fifty feet. So it's a. You look at to where our, you know, our fences, you're talking, you know, you're talking there. It's almost two hundred and seventy feet. So. Let's keep, let's go through the exercise fairly quickly. I know it can be a long night here. So this was, we had this done, this was done by an architect to kind of get a visual. What is the west property line? Looking from the homes. Now, this was not updated with the current berm. We just didn't have time to do that. So this is a depiction of what it'll look like if you're if you're actually standing on the west property line, all the trees in Dunham. So feel you can go through the, and again, if I'm going too fast with these slides, I just don't want to spend it. So this would be again, the southwest, the southwest of your Dunham. Again, looking up, going going up the hill. This is just some actual pictures we took of Dunham Road. Yeah. So when you look at the end of Dunham Road, looking north where it dead ends, and you can see obviously the heavy, the real heavy. Trees you already have in there in the plantings, a lot of our kind of scrub trees, but it still provides screening. Let's just skip, so we'll skip the landscaping. That was brought up by Kimberly. We don't need to do this. So another really important factor is, you know, we've talked about traffic. So we submit our traffic report, which is based on I T manuals. And what we also did is when when I did the Lockport project, we studied some of our buildings that we had in Romeo though, because. The the traffic report does a very good job, the I T E traffic report done by K L O A. It does a very good job of talking about what is your traffic peak hours? And that's really what everybody's looking is how much more you're adding to the in the peak hours of congestion. But those reports don't do any analysis on, I mean, the I T manual will have truck information there, but it doesn't have what time are people coming into buildings? What time are trucks coming into the buildings? So we studied that because one, I just had never seen reports on that. So. And then what we did for for this project is we studied two other projects in Lockport, Catherine Crossings. Which I would deem as a, especially the eleven two forty Catherine crossings. That's with a tenant called R J W, which is a which is a three P L, very, very truck intensive type user, which we would not see at this location. So that would, I would say, would be the highest density of truck traffic. If we can flip to page twenty two, then. This is the Prologis Park. The majority of these buildings are owned by Prologis. There's one owned by Duke, but that's a matter of truck traffic. So you know, two of these buildings are. Are occupied by Kimberly Clark, a very large consumer product company, twenty four seven operation. You know, we all buy their products, whether it's diapers or Old Spice deodorant or, you know, Gillette, et cetera. And so the, you know, as we all know, we go through a lot of that product. So they're high frequency type inventory that they have. So this I'd say is, and I, we call it a moderate use, but I would probably say for bulk warehouse, that's probably a heavy use. Which is surprising, their truck traffic, actually, if you look at the ratios we did, we basically took the number of cars and trucks that happened over there. These are inbound outbound. And then we came up with that ratio to that we're going to compare it to Lamont. So let's go to slide number twenty three. Which is the which is Bridgepoint Davy Road. Davy Road is it's we we list the tenants there. You know, Navistar has a training facility here. You do have a volleyball facility here. So this is going to be in the lighter and of truck traffic. It is probably very similar to the project Pan and Tony did in Darien up just northeast or northeast of our project. So if you look at this one, you look at the number of trucks that they have for three hundred and ninety six thousand square feet. It's thirty three trucks inbound and outbound, and the number of trucks they get between ten P M and seven A M is one. So this would be definitely on the wider end of, or I would say. I don't want to say this is what ours is going to be because we don't, you know, it's a speculative building, but. I don't want to say this is what ours is going to be because we don't, you know, it's a speculative building, but it gives, I think for the, the trustees, it gives you a range of, so our building will probably fit between the study we did for Prologis or I did for Prologis when I worked there, and then this Bridgepoint project that we, we presented. So we go to slide 24. Slide 24, and, and I know there's a lot of data here and I know some of you have seen this, but what it shows is, if you look at all three of the, the traffic studies we did, it shows the number of trucks. So the heavy usage Catherine crossings, I would say we'd have 83 trucks per day inbound and outbound. If it was more of like the bulk Prologis building was 47 trucks per day inbound, outbound. And the more the light manufacturer was 21 trucks again inbound, outbound. But really importantly too is, you know, except for now in the COVID area, most people aren't home during the day. So, you know, obviously if I'm a resident, I care about how many trucks show up at night. And, and you look here, it was 10, six and one. So that's total inbound and outbound. So, you know, if you're like the largest building you're getting, our building would get three inbound trucks over that period. And then they'd have, you know, three inbound and three, three outbound leaving and the other one had one. And then we went through the car vault, the, the, I won't spend much time in the car traffic. Our, you know, that's harder to tell by what type of user you get in there, how much office you have. But, but again, I think it gets a pretty good representative. So if we go to slide Phil, 25, the other thing too is, you know, and these are some conversations I've had with Andrew Weiss from the, from District 66 on regards to the, you know, the elementary and the junior highs. So right now, the number of traffics at the, excuse me, the, the total movements on, on Lamont Road is 28,500 and that's based on I dot numbers. And what we did is at our traffic study, it showed, you see, there's 2,000 vehicles. And this is not measuring from 83rd and Lamont Road. This is being measured from our, basically at the other Lamont Road in Darien, who went across there. But there's roughly, let's call it 2,000 movements, you know, northbound, southbound. And you can see the breakout on, on those numbers. It depends, you know, like in, in the morning, there's a lot more people going north and at night, a lot more people going south. So our total peak traffic is about 2.8 to 2.5% of the total movements on Lamont Road. Now that our traffic that's, our traffic engineer estimates 70% of our traffic will be coming from the south in the morning. So in the morning, when we talk about, you know, the, the children going to school, of that, you know, of the two, if we have 56 trips, we're roughly going to be, it's roughly going to be about 70% of, call it 35 trips. So our total traffic we're adding to Lamont Road peak at that intersection is about, I don't know, 1.5 or 1.6%. So which, I mean, we all can determine, is that a lot more traffic, but relative to add 30 more trips to where, you know, there roughly might be 1,400 isn't, you know, isn't a significant amount of new traffic. So with that too, and, and, and I know this, you know, Andrew's going to speak, but we've also talked to the, 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 uh, District 66 about things that we can do that, you know, can make the intersection safe. Now our traffic consultant says that, you know, this is kind of a state of art intersection with, you know, the countdown on, on the crosswalks. It's got, you know, no, no left turn or no right turn unless you have the signal. So it's set up to be a fairly safe intersection. But it doesn't have signage that says school zone or slow down. So there's things that we can do in there that we can do. There's also talk about having a cross guard. You know, one thing too is, you know, this project right now will generate for District 66, you know, about $125,000 a year more in, in real estate, well, income from the real estate taxes relative to now it's getting 6,000. So there's a lot of money that can go towards, you know, these aren't major, they're not major road improvements or just things that, that I think just make everybody feel safer what's being done at this intersection. You know, I don't live down there, so I can't speak to, you know, kids walking across there. I think as a parent, I'd be very concerned about my kid ever walking across this road. So I live in the city of Chicago and I, I'm very nervous about all the drivers there. So we'd like to be a, you know, a good neighbor again, and you know, we, we don't ever want one of our customers or anybody being involved in an accident there. So what do we? So we go to, now to page 26. I, I've already spent a lot of time on sound, so I won't dig back through all this. But the, go back, if you go back to the, the, if you can go back to the, the nice little thing here. Yeah. So this, this page 27, this just shows you the decimal levels. You know, we designed this, and, and, and this is also going to meet your code. We're designing this to get 40 decibels or below. So you start looking at the, you know, the levels here. And you, you know, if you look at some of the codes, like when we were at Lockport, I think their codes at night were like 65 or something like that. Well, that's, we just like, that's way too noisy. I don't care what the code says. We wanted that people don't hear our project. I don't want to over represent that they'll never hear a noise here. But for the most part, it should be so much mitigated by the sound attenuation we did. So let's just, we'll, we'll flip through this, Phil. We don't need to go through the Soundscape letter. You guys get an incredible amount of data there. I think what's important though is th- this is a letter I mentioned from Ben Benson from the city of Lockport. And I worked a lot with staff and, and the mayor there on getting that project. It's 200 acres. It's two, two million square feet project development. There's significant homes that were on the, on the coming into the park on the west side. And then all along, I guess the park I did at Prologis on the north side. And the big difference there was that we had our main spine road that was all the access to the buildings ran along the residential. And so where this is different here is, you know, we've talked about the distances of the last docks to the property line. But you know, what's not, you know, bear in mind, this building runs, you know, it basically runs perpendicular to the homes. There's still lots of docks that are, you know, depending on where you're in the building, are, are very far from that where the Lockport project, I think, Phil, I think we actually put the, the site plan in there. 36. If you can see that where the homes are, you can see where the road is. Yeah. The road is basically running, you know, to the, next to those homes. And then to the south, there was a, there's a natural, similar here. We had some natural buffers there that really took care of a lot of the homes in the south. But you know, this obviously was a lot of work with the residents and, and for the most part, at least what Ben Benson's telling me, I don't work at Prologis now. So nobody's calling me anymore from this development. But, um, but they, they think, they know the city's very happy with it and, and what he's saying, the residents are very happy with it. Go to slide 37. And this, we, we can skip that. Just we'll flip through that. Yeah. Go through. And the last thing I just want to go through is, I, I just, what I want to go through on emissions and that, that comes up about, you know, diesel fuels and emissions and idling. And I don't want to say that the trucks do idle in the winter time. Majority of trucks right now on the road are, are diesel. But this just puts, I just put some bullet points in here because you're definitely seeing a big movement towards alternative fuel. And I don't consider electric fuel, but electric trucks, Tesla's got an electric truck that they're doing. You have, you know, like some of these other products that we talked, Nicola Motors right now, they're doing, you know, they're doing hydrogen fueling. So what you're, my, my, I guess my point of this is now, is you're seeing obviously between the, the new EPA clean truck initiative standards, there's definitely a movement towards the either electric trucks, hydrogen trucks. I know there's also that they've been using natural gas. What the, the big thing is right now, the battery lives are, aren't strong enough for the long haul trucks, but you'll definitely see this for short haul trucks. Which that would be maybe for people, meaning long haul is the trucks that are coming from California to get to here. But you know, this probably, you'll probably see some of the trucks that are taking goods out of here will be the, will be these types of vehicles because it's, it's less than, less product going shorter distances, taking it to wherever they're taking it to within the, the greater Chicagoland area. So. I don't over represent and say in three years, every truck goes here is electric or hydrogen, but this is definitely moving. So there's two, obviously electric trucks and hydrogen trucks are much more, lot less emissions, lot cleaner. And, and also the new trucks now are so much cleaner, you know, this is here, the NOX emissions have dropped 40% since, you know, in the last 10 years. I mean, it's a dramatic difference, but there are things, electric trucks are very quiet. So I, I see the trend continuing. Again, I'm not, I don't want to over represent again that every truck's going to be electric out here. But there's definitely a movement that, you know, do I think in the next five to seven years that 50 to 60% of trucks are electric? Yeah, it's probably a fair guess. So you can take the data for what you want, you know, that's my guess. Who knows? They gotta get the, they gotta get the battery costs in line. They gotta get the trucks in line and it's a business. So. Uh, but with that, that's kind of the end of our presentation. I, I just want to be clear that I think we tried very hard understanding the residents' concerns, making sure we provided the setbacks, the screening, the, you know, what we did in regards to understanding traffic. So people had actual data to look at. And we didn't just come across as a developer that's saying, well, this won't be that bad. It's going to be fine for you guys and we're going to be out of this project. So that's why we presented, did spend extra money on studies, engineering or sound, the traffic, everything else. So we had actual data that people can look at and say, I, you can interpret how you want to interpret it, but we think we provided a very good, you know, compromise to exceed all the requirements of code on this project and, and try to minimize the impact. So with that, I, I guess I'm done talking. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Administrator Stonehage?
Thank you, Mayor Cunningham. We'll move on to public comment now.
Just, excuse me, I'm sorry. Administrator Stonehage, did you want to see if the trustees had any questions for the applicant?
And ask if our board members have any questions after the presentation by the developer?
Hi, Trustee Martinez here. I have a question.
Yes, Trustee Martinez.
The developer mentioned substantial amount of landscaping they're going to be putting in. How is that going to be maintained? Is there going to be underground sprinklers? How are you going to maintain that landscaping, especially in the first two to three years?
Thank you.
It requires a certain amount of the landscape.
I cannot hear.
Trustee Martinez, if I may, the village code requires an underground sprinkler system.
Okay. All right. Second question. Who's going to monitor the usage of the turnaround and the three doors to the west? I understand there's going to be gates back there. Who's going to monitor?
Uh, trustee Martinez, you know, that's, um, what we did, we had similar stuff in our Lockport. Well, I guess I didn't, I left before we signed leases, but our agreement was there was that we would put in the lease document that the restricted docks. But, but we're not on site, nor is our property manager on site. So I, you know, I guess the monitoring is if they're using the doors, there's going to be complaints. And then we need to enforce our rights to the tenant that they can't use the doors. But that's, so you just have to, I guess you have to hope that they don't use the doors. But again, if they're cited for using the door by the, the police or, or, or as an owner of the building, you come down and say, you need to quit doing this. You're in default for the lease. So, you know, it's a little bit of honor system, but you know, we, we hope they'll honor it. So they, they don't want the residents complaining. They don't want the police to come out to them either. So they, they want to operate in a, you know, a friendly environment, a safe environment.
I understand that part, but I was specifically asking, I understand according to what I was told that there would be gates to close the turnaround area and the three doors between 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM.
No, we, we never, so let me step back. What we suggested is that we will install the conduit to put the gate in. And, and we, what our, what we would ask for is we would like to see it. If, if there's an issue, the, the gate will be put in. So we want to see how, we might have a tenant there that's a heavy office user, like the Navistar training facility has, you know, we, we don't have any truck traffic there at night. So we want to see how it actually leased out before we, we put the gate in there. But we, I guess we've never said that we would put the gate that prevents those doors from being used. Looking at the plan. Yeah. Cause we don't really have a place to put a gate there because we would put it in the green space to, to do the turnaround. So I would say, I would, I would say that the, the, the other restricted doors will be restricted by the lease document. And again, it's, it's, you know, we just have to, you know, again, it's a little bit of honor system. But we work at a plan on putting a gate there that they couldn't get to those things. And I, I assume that there's not other buildings that have those, that restriction that have a gate up that you can't use, that you can't use those positions.
Jim, as discussed, I, I think you're missing the point with trustee Martinez's question. So it was agreed upon that we understand that all of this is speculative and is based on the use. If you have an office user, there won't be a need for that particular gate to block off that turnaround. The question on the table, if I'm understanding correctly, is that if there is a tenant in that back that needs to, that will be utilizing those docks as a part of their business operations. It had, was agreed that a security gate of some sort will be placed to block off or security arm or whatever mechanism to block off the turnaround and access overnight by trucks for those, those particular docks in that restricted area. Correct?
That, that's correct.
So the question, so Jim, please. So the question is, how will the gate function to make, to ensure to block the trucks from entering that area? Do, can you explain how the gate will work?
It would be, it would be timed. So if, if there, if, if there was an issue that trucks were using to turn around and it was an issue that we were having problems that were exceeding the noise levels or it was an issue for the residents, that's going to be installed and that will be on a timer. And at nine o'clock at night, the, 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 the arm goes down. And at seven in the morning, the arm goes back up. We, we, it'll all be done electronically.
There's technology similar to turning lights on outside your house that would be able to be run off a timer.
Right.
Trustee Martinez, does that answer your question?
Yes, he does. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I mean, can I, can I clarify one thing? I, I missed, trustee Martinez, I probably misspoke is if the security gate goes down, if I look where those dock positions are, when the gate goes down, that kind of interferes with those docks anyway. So I would, you know, so I guess the point being is if that starts going down, they, they're not going to be able to, they're not going to be able to work their way into the dock positions anyway, because the gate's going to affect their ability to maneuver in that area anyhow. So it'll, it'll be a natural barrier. So it's not actually blocking the docks. The truck just can't, he can't go any further to the west. So he's not going to be able to use those docks anyway, unless he runs through our gate. And well, that, and that'll be a problem for the tenant that did that. So.
So basically you're running the car traffic on the west side, on the west, in the north direction. Uh, they cannot access car, uh, that traffic to Lamont along the south direction. If you have the gate in place.
After a certain time period. Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please. Trustee Crusek.
I take it that you will be continuing to own, operate and manage this facility if you get approval?
I, I can't, I can't commit to that. We will develop it, lease it. Typically our, our, our business, well, let me step back. Our typical business model is depends who our, our partner is on this transaction. We, we do many transactions with partners that, that hold the building long-term. But there's also cases like the Darien building Pan and Tony did. They sold that to Tile and Top with that company. So I, I guess I can't, there's a possibility long, long term, but there's all, but there's probably an equal possibility or maybe more than maybe 60% chance that we would develop it and then sell the building upon completions or upon full lease up. But whatever conditions that, whatever conditions are in the leases and, and the village code, it runs with the property and doesn't change. And you know, one thing too is, you know, the, the type of companies that buy industrial buildings, which you see all the time in Woodbridge, you know, companies like Prologis, they're usually very large institutional type owners that buy these properties. So they're, they're going to operate it just like we would operate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, I have a question for the developer regarding sound. On that particular chart that you showed us, the circular graph, you said your goal is 40 decibels. Is that correct?
Yes. Well, that's what we're going to, that's what we're going to mean. That's, that's what your code requires also.
But in actuality, since there'll be a lot of truck traffic, it'll be closer to what's on the right of the 80 decibels, correct?
No, no, no. That's, that's a good question by looking at that graph. So, uh, no, what, that's why, that's if you were standing, and I don't know what distances is here. I think this is just if we pull this off the internet. But, but that's why we did the traffic or the sound study is, again, sound, it's the closer we put the sound wall, the screen wall to the truck docks, and then also the, the birmingham and the fencing, all that deflects sound. So what, where the decimal levels are measured are at the property line. No question, if you're standing in the truck corner and a truck drives by you, it's going to be at 80 decibels. But if you're standing in the residence on the west property line, it needs to be at nighttime, it needs to be at the 40 decibels. That's why we do those, the sound walls and the berms and the, and the, and the cedar fences to basically deflect sound. And again, sound dissipates from distance, with distance.
And speaking of the west line, I think it also bumps up against the south. I think there might be some confusion. At some point, is the fence 10 feet and other points it's 14 feet or is the fence 14 feet all along the west and the south?
Okay. So, so it's a, it's a good question. The fence that runs along the west and the south property line. So if, Phil, if you can show is, so the, on the property line or on the berm, excuse me, is a So if Phil, if you can show is, so the, on the property line or on the berm, excuse me, is a ten foot cedar fence. So that runs actually on, actually on the part of the north too, because we wanted to make sure we screened. We had noise attenuation there, but also any sort of lights that might come from a car driving. And so that runs, so basically we have a fairly, you know, I'll say that's not an L, we'll recall that letter. So it runs on the north side all the way down the west property line and then backed over to where, and then it comes back up again, the north property line. Where if you look at the, I wish I could point, if we were doing this live, I'd have my little red pointer. But you could see where it curves back around the pond, the south pond. You can see where it comes back up on the south pond. So continue that across and then it goes back up to basically where the trailer storage is. Then we, yeah, then we put another fence that goes basically back just between the ponds and the trailer storage. That's another fence. And the reason we did that is, as I kept, one thing that's very important with sound is the closer you could put the hard surface to where the noise is, it deflects that sound. So we were concerned that sound, even though we have the berm on the south and we have the fence, but again, sound is going to go. And so we were afraid that it's going to go over the fence and then, you know, and Phil that lives down the south, we don't, he's a very nice man. We don't want it. And he has a very nice home. We don't want noise. We don't want any noise with that home. So by putting that fence right by the trailer storage, that again deflects. It's kind of the, the sound starts getting kind of encapsulated. It may not be the right words for what a noise consultant, but that's what we did. Now, the fourteen foot fence, Phil, if you can show where the fourteen fences, that basically goes around, no, no, you're way too high. No, it starts right there. Yes, comes down, basically goes around the whole bowl. So when trucks are turning in there, that's going to deflect the sound from the trucks that are turning in that bowl and also the.
So what you're saying is that the fourteen foot fence is just for the turnaround area, but what runs along the property line and near the truck docks is ten feet. Is that correct?
Yep, yep. There's two different fences, correct.
I can barely hear you, gentlemen on the left.
You're correct. There's two different types of fence. One is a ten foot cedar fence and the other one's a fourteen foot screen fence.
And trustee Page, if I may, the cedar, the cedar fence that will be run along Dunham Road will be on top of a thirteen foot berm.
Yes.
Okay, so it's about twenty-three feet.
Of screen, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, please, trustee Abbott.
I have a question regarding traffic and the number of vehicles. I've seen the numbers that were shown tonight regarding the the truck traffic at peak hours. But what I'm looking for is how many cars and trucks are going to be going into that, into that facility and out on a daily basis? Do we know?
Well, trustee Abbott, I guess if you look at, let me pull up my traffic thing here. Again, it's, it's, it's hard, it's hard to tell until we lease the building up. But if we go to page, let's see, or page twenty-four. So we've already said that we think there'll be, in our, in our analysis, we think there'll be fifty trucks, twenty-five inbound, twenty-five outbound. So we've talked on trucks. And then the second part of that, the second part of this presentation shows the car traffic. So it, you know, so if you look at the heavy truck usage, which is where RJW is, but also it's ECP and Dover, I think Dover Chemicals, they have two hundred cars inbound and outbound. Their percentage would be, excuse me, that's their percentage applied to our development. That'd be two hundred and nine inbound outbound cars. The, the pro limes one is a hundred and sixty-five inbound outbound, which is a very, or that would be just using the same ratio, excuse me, make sure it's clear. These are using their ratios and applying it to this square footage. And then the one that the bridge point would be, we would have four hundred and fifty-nine cars inbound outbound. So my guess is you'll probably be closer to, in a given day, we have two hundred and what, four hundred or two hundred and forty parking spots or two hundred and fifty?
Two seventy-two, I believe.
Seventy-two. So we have two hundred. So if we max out our parking, we're going to have two hundred and seventy-two cars inbound and two hundred and seventy-two cars outbound. The traffic study says our peak traffic will be fifty-six, fifty-six truck movements AM and I think it's fifty-six peak, yeah, fifty-eight on PM. So that's cars and trucks.
Well, I guess, I understand you can't know for certain until you have your tenants, but, I mean, so you said, so with two hundred and seventy-two parking spaces, is it a fair assumption that you're going to have about two hundred and seventy cars coming in every day? Or is that, I mean, I don't know what the ratio that, that typically is used.
It's really hard to say.
Can you give me a range at least?
Yeah, I would say that my guess is on a building of this, we, well, we design it because we think that's the type of traffic we'll see. So we're not, we probably oversized the parking a little bit to be safe. But I personally think you're going to have heavier type office users or light assemblage. So yeah, I think you'll have two hundred and fifty cars a day. That's my guess will be two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty. I can be wrong, but I, I think that's the type of users that are going to come here. Higher offer percentage, light assemblage or some type of thing, like, like the project bridge development did up at Downers Grove, where you get Isencrop and you get like, you know, you get some sort of medical type companies in here. So that's my guess. You'll have that one. And, you know, to be honest, it could be more. You said I actually see people park in the truck court when they're very heavy office or like doing some sort of processing or something. So.
So one question I, another question I have is regarding the entrance, the, the southernmost, most entrance. Yes. Where the trucks would be coming in and out of. Is there going to be one lane to exit Antulamont Road? Or will there be two lanes? Because obviously you can go right or left there.
We set that up as if we set.
So I'm just curious whether.
And that's something I really push for our consultants is their engineers. There's two lanes. So it's going to be a left turn lane. And there's, I don't think we actually have a, you can zoom in on the site plan. I don't know how. Actually, well, it's Kim's, Kim's drawing that showed that where she measured the, where the elevation, that actually shows it right there. So you're going to have, you have a left turn lane and then you have a right turn lane. Yeah, it just gets a little blurry. Yeah.
So there'd be two lanes out, one lane in at that location?
Yeah, what I, what was important for us is a left turn at peak is not very easy to do here. It's, it's, you know, if you look at the traffic study, it's a little challenging there. Cars, and again, the traffic study only looks at, they don't look at gaps in traffic and it doesn't look like somebody's going to drive into the, the middle kind of suicide lane. So it's, so it's for trucks, it's trucks are not going to go left at peak hours. They can't, they're only going to go right. No, I go right anyway because they're going down to fifty-five. But for cars, it's, it's, it's a, it's a tough movement. So my guess is that most people that are going southbound will end, will exit at the north because that basically gets them going the right direction. So, so I, my guess is most, most vehicle traffic will not be doing left turns anyway.
Well, but if you're headed, if you have to head north at the end of your workday, obviously you'll make the left to head north on Lamont Road, right?
Well, I've been out there checking traffic at night and what, what I would do, because I'm also very impatient. I would go south and go down eighty-third, then cut, come back up to seventy-fifth because I don't have to, or I'd go down and catch, you know, where, catch the intersection or the intersection. If I had to go on three fifty-five, I'd catch it at Fountain. So I would, I would avoid seventy-fifth because the seventy-fifth has a lot of lights. So that, that's just me.
You're talking cars, right?
What's that?
You're talking cars now.
No, cars, yeah. Trucks, trucks are going to go, the trucks are going to go south. The trucks will not want to make that movement. The trucks won't want to be on seventy-fifth because all the lights, they just won't, they'll go south. What are you on through?
Are the, is, are the lanes wide enough so that you could have a truck in the right or the southmost right turn lane and a car in the lane to the north of it? And have that truck make that turn while, while that car is sitting there waiting to be able to enter at Lamont Road?
Yes, templates have been used to make sure that entrance is wide enough for three truck, three traffic movements simultaneously.
So a truck could be coming in from the north and we have to design that per the Page County Department of Transportation. So a truck has to, so we're actually doing a D cell lane on Lamont Road, which, you know, so a truck or a car obviously can make that swing into the property. Why there's a car sitting in or a truck sitting in the left, in the, in the outbound northernmost lane.
Okay. I, I, yes.
I'm sorry. And just as an additional point of clarification, due to Lamont Road being under the jurisdiction of the county and is a reference, the template they would need to use to ensure that access, those two access points meet their requirements, they wouldn't, if, if approved, they wouldn't be able to get a building permit until the county told us that they met all those roadway requirements.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you for that. My, my concern is that Lamont Road is a, that road between seventy-fifth and eighty-third street. People typically go between forty-five and fifty. And I'm just trying to envision a car coming out of here, trying to make a left. It just, it just seems like it can be problematic. And I'm just trying to figure out how this can be done safely. That's all. But thank you.
Correct.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, please.
One other question, I believe you said that you have a deceleration lane to turn into the into the parking area if you're a truck. So they would not be turning from the right hand lane. There would actually be another lane that's constructed there.
If they're coming southbound, well, a truck or a car, it doesn't matter.
A car, it could be a car, but I imagine most cars are going to go in at the northern entrance.
Well, no, the northern entrance is a right in, right out. So.
Right. That's what I mean. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm saying if they're coming south.
If you're coming south, everybody's going to come in at the north entrance.
All trucks come into the southernmost entrance.
Right. And so for them coming in at the southernmost entrance, there's going to be actually a third lane for them to turn in there?
That is correct. That's the requirement by DUDAT.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, please, trustee Blair.
I have a question that was just touched upon. We've talked a lot about the traffic on Lamont Road. And to the point that was just made, you don't want to make a left-hand turn particularly during peak hours. You would just go around and take eighty, if you're going west, you would just go around and take eighty-third street to perhaps Woodward or James or, you know, wherever, how far west do you want to go? Maybe all the way to fifty-three for all I know. Has there been any kind of a study done on the potential increased traffic that eighty-third street might have?
Now, what I would say, trustee Blair, is that our traffic study says that our peak traffic is fifty-eight vehicles and between the peak hours PM or in so, it, I can't tell you what percentage are going northbound or southbound. But it, you know, they're saying seventy percent. But again, you're, you're talking about thirty-five vehicles, whether it's a truck or a car, using the different roads. So it's, you know, whether or not people, I can't tell you what the people are going to do. That was just my speculation. So it's relative. I don't know what the traffic count is in eighty-third, but, but my, you know, I don't think another fifteen cars on that is significant increase in volume of traffic.
Trustee Blair, if I may, this is Director Porter. Tom Adamchik is still on the call. He's been with us with, working for the village for several years now. And do believe that eighty-third street, that location is within the city of Darien. Tom, do you have any information, historical data on traffic patterns on eighty-third street that you can share? Thank you.
This is Tom Adamchik speaking. As far as historical traffic, we would have to go back and research that information. We don't have at hand historic data on that intersection. The, what I can say is I'm looking at the traffic study and during the morning peak hour, the left turns out of the site are only six vehicles going north. So during the morning peak hour, if they opted to go south, you're talking six vehicles or basically on average, one every ten minutes that possibly would go south and then west to go back north. Evening peak hour, we're looking at twenty vehicles making the left turn to go north, of which those a portion may opt to go south. However, the traffic volumes along Lamont Road do experience some degree of platooning of traffic where when the light turns green up at seventy-fifth street, you'll get a bunch of cars coming through. And then as that group of cars starts to clear out, you get some gaps in traffic for left turns. And for these drivers to drive south, they're, any driver that elects to go south is basically weighing the difference in time that it would take them to turn left and go north versus going south to eighty-third street and then continue west and then go north from there. So that's going to be, it's kind of going to be a decision that the drivers make. And when they regularly are leaving the site, the workers there, they'll probably find that in the long run, the fifty-second or so delay that I believe that was shown for the left turns going out it may not be. They, they, they may find it will, will be longer for them to go south and then come back up as opposed to just waiting that fifty seconds or so to turn left and go north.
Thank you. I do have one more question, probably for Director Porter. If you could just review with us one more time, and I know we've, we've talked about it. The restrictions for truck traffic on eighty-third street. You know, weight limits, if you, if you know them, and what kind of truck, truck traffic that maybe we could expect or not expect.
Well, that, again, that trustee Blair, based on what I know is that that is a federal route, similar to routes down by the Edward Don facility that are FAU routes. Those particular route area, those streets were, were funded with federal dollars in which the city of Darien or the portions of streets that we have that are FAU routes, we cannot prohibit trucks from operating on those streets. But our police department oversees the overweight truck, trucking program. So if any trucks are obviously breaking any type of traffic laws, or if they're running trucks that are too large to operate, then our police department will enforce our overweight truck program and processes with respect to those sizes of trucks. But since that is something that is not within my wheelhouse, unfortunately, trustee Blair, don't know what the size limitations are or maximums are.
Okay. I was just curious, like, can we expect to see semis going down eighty-third street on a regular basis? I would hope not.
I would hope not either.
Thank you.
To this point, I got a question for the developer. When you planned this particular project, the question that trustee Blair just asked regarding traffic southbound, and I'm talking not cars, I'm talking about trucks. Did you have any expectations of them taking a quote shortcut and making a ride on eighty-third street? Because whatever reason.
I, I, like, I'm not a truck driver, but I don't see any reason. I don't see any reason a truck ever goes on eighty-third street. I don't, so trucks are going to go. If they possibly had to go northbound, their decisions are going to be, I take a left turn to go up to seventy-fifth and catch, catch three fifty-five at seventy-fifth. Or if they, they feel it's faster to go southbound, they're, you know, they, they possibly could go, I mean, I guess they could try to catch that fountain. But my guess is if they're going that far anyway, they're just going to continue down to, go down to the fifty-five and catch it and then just get on three fifty-five. So trucks don't, they like to go on the faster routes and, you know, they're, and they're not, they're also not as impatient as, as, as people driving our cars. So I don't, I would be shocked if I saw a truck ever on eighty-third street. They don't see what it's saving time and they don't like.
That's fine. Thank you.
Tom, as serving as a village's traffic consultant, is it true that trucks, when going from A to B, point A to point B, there's, they're mandated to travel the shortest route?
When driving on local streets, I believe that's the case. When, when you're talking about large trucks, they generally will stick to the designated truck routes, if you will. The heavier, the higher volume, larger cross-section streets because they're easier to. Because they're easier to navigate rather than the smaller streets.
And would eighty-third street be seen as a smaller street or the larger streets you just spoke about?
Eighty-third street, i- if the trucks are intending to go to drive distances. They're looking at getting on the three fifty-five or going down to I fifty-five. If they turn down eighty-third street, there is no interchange at eighty-third street. So then they would have to find an alternate route or turn on a north-south street to get to one of those interchanges. So it's, we feel that it's not very likely that there will be a large number of trucks that will use eighty-third street.
Thank you, Tom.
We got one more question, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes, please, Trustee Martinez.
For the developer, you got, I forget how many spots, you got probably like forty trailer parking spots, more or less. Right there, on that area that you're pointing right now.
Oh, we have twenty.
What is, what's your expectation for trailer parking? You don't have a user, so it's probably somewhat of a guess, but you are putting in quite a few trailer, trailer parking spots.
Well, I mean, so I think just bigger picture or perspective, we, we like to design buildings that have, I'd say, maximum flexibility or, or, you know, that any potential user could use, would fit in obviously the zoning code. I can't tell you that people will use the trailer spots, I, I see a lot of people now using trailer spots to basically do like the Home Depots and the Lowe's of the world doing it where they put their box trucks in there. But, but, but there could be a user that does trailer storage here, so that, that drops trailers. So that, it's like, we, we, we like that flexibility that you can still have, they can use the trailer spots for, or trailers, stalls for trailers. So I can't, I don't know what user it's going to be, but, but they could be used for trailers, definitely.
But please note, let me make sure I'm off mute, please note that if this building is approved, the users will still have to come back before staff to discuss if those uses are allowed. The code will not allow for long-term, long-term storage of tractor-trailers if a user needs that. They will be allowed to be able to park and unload and load typically for twenty-four to forty-hour short-term storage facility. And those trailers will have to be removed. So any user that came before the village to staff to apply for business licensing, that is part of the process. We vet those business operations, if a user, a future user of any of these particular spaces, whether it's a single user or multi-tenant building, if they come in with a business operation in which they need that, those particular stalls for long term, that business will be turned away.
Thank you, I do have one more question.
Yes, please, Trustee Martinez.
For the developer again. We appreciate, first of all, I, I do want to say that I appreciate the effort you guys have put to try to work with the requirements and the requests that have been made. And you have, over the last week or so especially, you have made some modifications to your plan. But I, I have sort of a simple question, when you started planning this building, which was at the time two hundred and fifty thousand, fifty-two thousand or whatever. Did you ever consider making a building that was two hundred thousand instead of two hundred and fifty thousand?
No, we, we did not consider that based upon just, you know, the, the, the price of the land, it doesn't economically work.
Say that again, please, I couldn't hear you.
I said that, that was never considered, basically, you know, on the, the market value of industrial land in the Woodridge area, that, that economics would never work for a building of that size, so we focused, we focused on what, what was allowed by code and then trying to reduce that FAR to provide the screening and everything else, so no, we, we never considered doing a building that small.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, Trustee Abbott.
I had a couple more questions about the, uh, traffic issues. Gentlemen, I'm, I'm just wanting, I'm, I'm still not sure I, I have a clear understanding. You, you mentioned about, I believe you mentioned fifty, you estimate about fifty trucks a day in and out. Am I right on that?
Yes.
Okay, and then you said you think there'll be two hundred and fifty cars as an estimate in and out daily, is that correct?
Correct.
So we're at about three hundred vehicles combined a day, right? And you've mentioned the peak hours that you said there'd be, I believe you said fifty-eight vehicles during the peak hour in the morning and, and, and exiting at night during the peak hour, am I, did I get that correct?
That's correct.
So, I mean, it's, so it looks like we're talking about sixty vehicles out of three hundred. Well, that fifty-eight vehicles during the peak, that, does that include cars and trucks?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're looking at about, it looks like, quick math in my head, it's about twenty percent of the expected truck vehicles coming in and going out during peak hours. That leaves about eighty percent, about eighty percent of the vehicles at other times. Based upon other projects you've done, I mean, are we looking at most of that other traffic? When, I guess my question is, when you're talking about peak times, are you talking about peak times for, for the traffic that's going to come in and out of this warehouse? Are you talking about just generic peak times? I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, so peak times in the morning are seven fifteen to eight fifteen by the IT manual, or at least the traffic study. And then the peak PM hours are four forty-five to five forty-five.
Well, so, so those peak hours, those are, that's dictated by some standard that has nothing to do with this building, am I correct?
Well, it's, it's based on buildings like this, it's, yeah, it's based on, I don't know how many thousands of buildings they study, but it's a, it's an industry standard of traffic that's used by every municipality.
Okay, but I mean, but it's nothing that was particularly determined regarding this parcel at this location, am I correct?
No, it's just based on similar buildings across the country.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, sir.
I just said comparable buildings such as this with the similar potential end-users.
So as far as, can you, and maybe, maybe you can't, but because you don't know the tenant mix at this point. But of those three hundred cars a day coming in and out, can you give an estimate of when you think most of the vehicles would be coming in? I mean, are we looking between like six and nine or some, you know, coming in and leaving between, you know, three and six? Or, I mean, do you have any kind of estimates? Because I'm trying to figure out the load of traffic that's going to be going on those roads, not just at the peak time, but, you know, at other times during the day, because that, you know, if, on that parcel between some, or on that roadway between seventy-fifth and eighty-third. There's really no other big, big development or, or, or business that dumps that much traffic out on the road. So I'm trying to get an idea of timing of when you expect the majority of the traffic to be coming in and out.
Yeah, I, I, I can't speak exactly when, when they'll come in there, and I don't think they come out through the whole day. I think you, you'll see, I think you'll see a lot of people getting there earlier in the morning, six thirty, seven. And I think, you know, they probably work a little bit later than four forty-five or five. So, you know, what I, I would guess that you see a lot of traffic leading after six o'clock, so that would be my guess. You're, you're going to see the bigger chunks in theirs, but when we looked at the traffic studies we did on, you know, some of these projects, it was kind of dispersed through the whole day. So sometimes part of the traffic is customers showing up, and then, so it, it varies who the tenant is, so, and customers can show up at any time during the day.
Yes.
May I also request a point of clarification follow-up, because I'm actually now confused listening based on what the applicant is, is presenting? Is that affirmative?
Yes.
So, um, before Trustee Abbott goes into his subsequent question, you have your proposed development site plan here. And then these two boxes, Jim, that you provide, you're, this is based on some subsequent study that you conducted of these particular developments. That you're trying to say that, oh, based on us looking at this, this is what we're thinking. Is this not correct? So, but the peak period, see, we're, we're, you're kind of merging two different studies. You've done an independent study review of Catherine's Car Crossing Pro Lodges in Bridge Point. And you're trying to say, okay, well, our view of this, we're anticipating this. But Trustee Abbott is also referring to the official traffic study that was done by KLA on your behalf. So I think the confusion is coming in that he's trying to find out, based on what you're depicting, is what you're showing here applied to the site plan? Or are we talking about the traffic study from KLA, which is giving speculative information? And Tom is on this line again. He, he has reviewed that particular KLOA, because I think that's why the trustee is constantly trying to, to take a deeper dive, if I may, Trustee Abbott. Because you have information from a study that you've, additional study that was conducted. And you're trying to extrapolate those numbers onto the site plan, but he's also referring to the official traffic study that was conducted. You following?
I, I, I agree, I, I, I think I understand what his question is, I, I just can't give him an answer on what I think the cars are coming in throughout the day. I don't have that data.
Well, if I can follow up, I mean, businesses that you would anticipate, are they typically like nine-to-five type businesses or are these?
I think more people are here earlier in the morning, so I think people will be showing up here at six thirty in the morning. You know, the car will be showing up, the employee will be showing up then, and I think they typically work a little bit later. So it's, you know, they might, I would say have two shifts, but they could be, you can see more people working after six o'clock. And then dur- during the day, you're going to see customers, and I think it also depends, it also depends on what type of company you have. If you've got a significant amount of office, you might be showing up at, you know, like, like most people do, between seven thirty and eight thirty. If you have a significant amount of office, the warehouse workers probably work different hours here, so they probably get there earlier. So it depends on what your mix of employees is, or the type of business that you have.
I see, okay, thank you.
Right.
Okay, thank you, any other board member with any questions at this point?
Madam Mayor?
I have another question, but go ahead, go ahead, Trustee.
Yes, Trustee Page.
Are we just asking questions of the developer or just questions in general to Director Porter as well? Mike, I mean, Trustee Martinez, do you want to ask the developer and I'll come back?
If I can, yes.
Sure.
Just a quick question, because I'm a little confused. Garbage collection, what, how are you proposing the garbage to be stored and collected? Generally, if we're talking about noise, garbage is generally picked up very early in the morning. Those trucks make a lot of noise and you cannot even measure those trucks with the regular delivery, you know, the regular over-the-road trucks. So what's your proposal for garbage?
Well, what you'll typically see in industrial buildings is though, you can see it shows future compactor. Yeah, what you typically see with a lot of companies is that they will have, again, it depends on what their use is. That they'll have, typically have a compactor, they'll take a dock position and drop a compactor on there. And they'll put their trash obviously in the compactor, and then at some point, that's being picked up by, by, you know, waste management or somebody. I, I can't speak to what hours they come to get them, but you're probably right, they probably come earlier in the morning. I, I guess I would say, Trustee Martinez, again, going back to all the things we tried to do with the setbacks from the residents and also all the sound attenuation, you know, I would think that provides a lot of buffering. So I, so again, not knowing the user, I, I can't tell you what time they're coming to pick up trash, but I would say that's what you're going to see. You know, an average amount of industrial users are going to have trash compactors that are picked up during the course of a week or course of a couple.
So there would be more than one location, because right now your site just shows, your site plan shows.
That's correct, well, typically, but, you know, but it's, but it's interesting, you know, Ed and I are involved in a project in, in Elgro Village. And there's not one company we're doing a deal with, or our projects we're doing in Cincinnati, which are, you know, one hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand buildings. There's not one company asking for a trash compactor. So I, I don't know what they're doing if they're trash, so I never manage the buildings. But, but, but there's not one dock position that's, they're putting a trash compactor in there, right? Right, so even the deal we're doing in Indianapolis, Arrow does not have a trash compactor.
They do not.
Right, so maybe if you're just not generating a lot of waste material, you don't need it, you can store it inside there and it's picked up during, you know, normal business hours inside the building. I, I, so again, I don't operate these facilities, so I, I don't want to sound like, I, I know development very well and traffic and noise and all of that, but I, I can't speak to every tenant's operation, so.
Trustee Martinez, additional point of clarification, when, if this building is approved and a tenant come, if the building is approved. When a tenant comes in, we start to vet those processes and includes the location of the future track, trash compactors. As well as we begin to speak with them about the maneuvering of trash. Now, a noise ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, which is administered initially by our police department. I think that some, unfortunately, beeping sounds from, from the garbage truck may be exempt from the noise ordinance. But the fact that the tr- the trash, the, the garbage truck being there before seven AM is the no-no. So there is an additional piece of oversight that happens at the staff and permitting level when we start to work with the individual tenants.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome, sir.
I, I have two questions for you, I know that one of the recent changes is truck dock positions built at construction. The current number, I believe, is twenty-seven, which is down from thirty-two. Does this, if this building is approved, does that mean that would, there would be two phases of construction? So only twenty-seven are built and then maybe later on additional? Explain how that works to me.
It's this question for me, Trustee Page, I didn't hear the beginning, so.
Or it might be for the developer, but I didn't understand if this building is approved, how the construction will work if only a certain number are done at the beginning.
So I'll take the first crack, CA Ventures, so they're proposing for the initial construction of whatever's listed, I can't see on here, I think it's twenty-seven active dock doors. The potential users, the future users, if approved, will be responsible for their own build-out based on their use. So at that point, the discussions will be had with the owners of the building, CA Ventures, on which dock doors they'll be utilizing, so on and so forth. So initially at construction, the black squares in this revised site plan before you would be the dock doors that will be built at construction with the levelers, those are the four operational dock doors. Did I get that right, CA?
That's correct, and then Trustee Page, what, what does happen, so what we try to do is, we try to put the doors in. We try to put the doors in, one, we try to put like two dock positions in every bay, because it gives us the flexibility then, that how we subdivide the building, so the tenants have equal amount of dock positions. But we also try to put the, initially put the doors in where we think that will be the door count for these companies. So a typical building of this size and type of companies, one per ten thousand is probably a pretty good number. So we're at one per like nine thousand, one dock door per nine thousand square feet. Then we did, as you can see, our, and I don't remember Ed, which ones are the, the reds or the, the doors that we're putting in, correct?
That is correct.
So then we have, we'll actually have a door position, so there's actually a dock door, but there's no leveler there. And, and the reason we do that is just a cost thing, it's, it's, it's expensive for us to come in later to cut out pre-cast. And so we, we try to give ourselves some flexibility where we think the next dock door. So if we came in and if a user said, I need an extra two dock doors, we would put them in after, that's part of the building. You know, the, I guess, the, the tenant permit process of, we're going to add two more dock doors here. And so we would put the dock doors in where they need those dock doors out.
So Trustee Page, after the building is built, when we get a tenant, should that tenant require more dock positions? That's when that would be built again.
Framed, but you didn't, you didn't put a dock door?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Well, you got three different types of doors, levelers, you got none, some doors without levelers, and then you got boards that are just framed on the wall, I call them framed, you may call it something else, okay?
The blue, the.
Or it's not built, but you could do it in the future by punching that area out.
All of the door positions are prepared for current or future dock positions. So the blue triangle represents a future overhead door that is currently going to be built with pre-cast as a knockout. So in the future, it could get saw cut down. So in the future, it could get soft cut down and a door could be added.
And then my second.
Wait a minute, did you get a new tenant?
Wait, wait, trustee, you repeat that trustee Martinez.
The future may be the minute you get a new tenant.
A new tenant may or may not require modification to the current dock situation.
All right, thanks.
Then my second question, and this might be for Director Porter. Understanding we're voting on the variances tonight. One of the variances involves the fence along the south property.
No, it's the, it's.
I'm sorry, not.
Wall around the turnaround.
Okay, not what direction is that? There's so, there's no variance regarding the ten foot fence running along the south by that detention? That's not one of the variances?
No, it's, it's the screening wall to go from, the code only allows ten, they need fourteen.
And there wasn't a variance of one needing that was normally twenty, but is we're doing the ten?
Initially, the seat of fence was, but once we had the modify, the last minute modifications to the building, they don't need that anymore. It's just the screening wall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I, I have one question for, uh, Ms. Porter.
Yes, please trustee Abbott.
Do you, do you know, or if the, if the CA Venture guys know, that's fine too. But do you know, um, what the number of cars and trucks is that comes out of the Panatoni Warehouse to the north on a daily basis?
I tried to obtain that information and staff was not, and, and the C of Darien staff was not able to locate the traffic study that was submitted back initially in 2014 for the Panatoni Building trustee Abbott.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Cunningham. Okay, everyone, we'll proceed to the public comment portion of this meeting. Uh, just a couple of points. Uh, each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Uh, we're going to start with in-person, uh, public comment first. If you have not done so already, if you could please fill out one of these cards, please hand it to Mr. Bozak over there and I'll make sure to call your name. Uh, secondly, after in-person public comment, uh, we'll then proceed to the virtual or those who have joined us via Zoom uh, for public comment. And if you have, I know some folks may have signed up for in-person and Zoom. So you'll have the option for one or the other, but, but not both. Okay. So just to clarify that. Um, and then following public comments, I'll turn it back over to Mayor Cunningham, uh, for further board deliberation and discussion.
All right. Administrator Storch, uh, before we get going, just a couple of additional comments. Uh, the members, uh, who are speaking and members of the public who are speaking, when you have thirty seconds left, I'll uh, mention that you have thirty seconds left and then, uh, I'll mention at three minutes that your, uh, your time has expired.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you, mayor. All right. We'll start with in-person, uh, and up first is Lenore Vidal, twelve oh four Longford. Please approach the podium here and Mr. Green will instruct you accordingly.
Again, just remind anyone who is going to speak to remember to identify yourself and your address. Thank you. Sorry.
My name is Lenore Vidal. I live at twelve oh four Longford Street in Woodridge. Um, I am an attorney, a tax attorney. I work, um, for a corporation in House Counsel and I also teach uh, various tech classes throughout the United States and universities here in Illinois. Um, so I am here to talk about taxes because that's what I know. So, um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak as well. Thank you. Um, I wanted to, um, start off with, uh, an analysis of your two thousand nineteen financial report. States that the sales tax component of your revenue stream is thirteen million of the overall twenty-three million in governmental activity revenue for the village. I know, um, due to COVID nineteen declines in retail, that has affected all businesses, including, um, the village, I'm sure. And I therefore would like to point out the lack of tax revenues that will occur, um, from a development of this type. I, um, Illinois law states that, um, the local portion of the Illinois ROT is allocated to the village based on, it's like an eleven point test that you have to go through. Um, and the kind of building that will generate sales tax revenue for the village of Woodridge is one that's either a point of sale or has a heavy, um, office component. It's, it's a headquarters that has back office personnel such as accounting, finance, legal, et cetera. Um, this type of a building development that's a large footprint warehouse with truck docks is not going to have the same volume of sales, if any, um, that would generate any sort of sales tax revenue for the village. It's, it's a highly unlikely situation that only five percent of this being built out as office space would provide any sort of, uh, relief for that kind of revenue. Um, the second component of taxes is the property tax component. And I know that, um, CA Ventures did put together a chart, sort of estimating what they thought the benefit would be of their development. And I just wanted to point out one or two things about that. Although only four million of your revenue sources are from, um, property taxes, I think, um, and their chart had one or two, um, things that I, I would have done differently with the, the tax rate. They pulled the two thousand eighteen rate instead of the nineteen rate. But even if you utilize their numbers at a hundred and sixty or so thousand dollars of property tax revenue for the year, um, if you look at utilizing that space in a different way of, um, having more taxpayers involved, so multiple offices or a residential component, the same space could give rise to sixty-two houses, which would provide six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of property tax revenue for the village to year. Um, I believe it's the board's fiscal responsibility to consider what is best for the residents of Woodridge. And, um, especially in such a time of economic hardship that I just want you to consider the best use of the property for the future. Thank you.
Three minutes on the button.
Thank you. Next up is Angie Johnson, please. Angie Johnson? Okay. We'll, uh, I'll put her right here aside and we'll come back. We'll come back to Angie. All right. Uh, next up, if he's in the room, is Ron Ullin. We'll just pause for a moment. We have some of our, uh, our guests, uh, in the lobby here and we're just going to go, uh, call them in.
There's a little delay on the video.
A little time delay, so thank you. Angie?
Hi, my name is Angie Johnson. I'm at twelve oh five Chesham Court in Woodridge. Uh, this is in my backyard and it's really upsetting me and a lot of my neighbors. It's a, it's safe to say that the residents do not believe in the traffic study that was presented, especially given to unknown tenants and especially after talking tonight with so many ifs about where trucks are coming and how many. Uh, I point to the memo on page six thirty of your packet, which compares this KLOA traffic study with another by the same company for a spec warehouse in Darien on page six ninety-three. The numbers don't add up. The Woodridge Warehouse is sixty-five percent larger with fifty-two percent more docks, little less since last night. But according to the summary, CA Ventures presented on July twenty, that there will be fourteen fewer trucks. It just defies logic, the discrepancy in the numbers. Also, the fact is the traffic assessment was made after changes in traffic patterns were already starting to do the COVID, as in Google and other businesses had already issued their work from home. The governor had declared all counties a disaster area, universities were closing, travel plans were being canceled, individuals were limiting activities and people were just afraid to go out. Yet this was not factored into the study as to the traffic. Finally, lack of bike and pedestrian traffic is not surprising, given the time of day the study was conducted, rush hours only. As well as the time of year, March, average of the week is historically forty, forty-six degrees, not ideal for biking. Above all, please remember, this is a spec warehouse. And while we don't know the tenants, we do know the building's design. Under no circumstances is fifty docks, forty-eight docks meant, meant to service only twenty-five to fifty trucks per day. We're not falling for this and neither should you. Please consider what we're all talking about. Thank you.
All right, next up.
All members of the public, you come to speak just for a frame from just in the podium. We have a couple of technical issues there by Captain Mousk.
No, Ron Ullin, please. Thank you.
Good evening, welcome.
I, I just remind all the people in the room, they have to keep their masks on when you're talking. I know it's uncomfortable.
Okay. Uh, I live at, uh, my name is Ron Ullin. I live at, uh, thirteen forty eighty-third street. I just wanted to go on record saying that, uh, I do support this building. Uh, we were rezoned about twenty years ago, uh, to, uh, ORI. A lot of people that live in the area are afraid to put money into their homes because they'll know they'll never get it back due to the zoning. That's, uh, the, that Woodridge imposed on us pretty much. So I just want to go on record saying that, um, prove change is good for the community. I think it's time. So I just thought I'd go on record. Thanks.
All right, next up is Sheri Ullin.
Hi, I'm Sheri Ullin. And my time starts, okay, I'd like to say that.
Just give your address as well.
Oh, thirteen forty eighty-third street. I'm a resident, um, my whole life there. Um, and I live right on eighty-third. Okay, so I'm here just to say, to clarify that, yes, I am in favor of this building. This has been a journey for me. Um, I never intended to sell my property or to move. And I say this again, that my grandfather bought all of eighty-third street, the frontage in nineteen twenty-eight. So I, um, have been there my whole life. But twenty-one years ago, we were forced annexed and zoned. And it was posted on, on nextdoor.com just recently by people and they made residents panic. I think that, you know, when all of this took place, that there should have been, people needed to come to our aid. It's been going on for a long time. They didn't understand what happened twenty-one years ago. And their voices are important, but so are ours. These are our properties. Um, and for the future developers or the board members, those people who oppose, I believe are uneducated in what ORI zoning means. It means helicopter drop. It means this building. It means so many more things that I'm not going to go into, but they need to do their studies to find out if this building doesn't go in, there's other things that could be going in that won't appease them probably. And I want to say thank you to our neighbor Dean Romy that said, people who purchased the property and are purchasing in quotes, airport property, he has to understand that there's going to be airplanes. Um, these people should be allowed to sell their property. This is so many contracts that they've had. They need to know that they could move forward. And Woodridge needs to, who put this in motion twenty-one years ago, needs to finish what they started. If not, something has got to change. It's not working. So I, I would like this to move forward and be done with the development of this property of what they started twenty-one years ago. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time. Okay.
Next speaker is Rosemary Kirk, please.
Good evening. Rosemary Kirk, twelve oh nine Chesham Court in Woodridge. Before my time starts, I just want to go on record as saying that three minutes isn't sufficient to state a case for my life and my home. Now we can start. Um, I'm bringing to light the extreme extent to which this proposal deviates from our zoning laws, not zoning suggestions, zoning laws. We have a law on building height of forty feet appropriately measured by structure plus grading. Because whether it's the structure alone or the structure plus the grading, the net impact is identical. In this case soaring forty-eight and a half feet into the air, the size of a five-story building in your backyard. Now, without any findings of fact, except the unsubstantiated staff version created after the vote, the Plan Commission narrowly approved a proposal to deviate from that law, not by one inch, not by one percent, but considerably more. So how much is okay? Two percent, four percent? No, this deviation is twenty-one point two five percent. So I ask you, what's a law, give or take twenty-one point two five percent? Because if that's okay, I'm sure Police Chief Cunningham would be understanding with drivers in thirty mile an hour zones, speeding up to thirty-six, thirty-seven. And of course, the village would be totally comfortable with sixteen-year-olds hanging out in bars. Following the same logic, this board would be fine with consensual sex with a minor at age fourteen. Because, you know, what's a law, give or take twenty-one point two five percent? Well, just like these examples, it's a violation of the law and a clear endanger and a clear danger to the public health, safety and welfare, which others will address further. Now, this board has a sworn duty to create, maintain and uphold zoning laws to promote public health, safety and welfare and prohibit structures that are incompatible with the character of the community. This proposal violates both criteria. Why would you create a law that is okay to violate by more than twenty percent? It simply defies logic. I still call on the four members of the Plan Commission who voted for this warehouse to explain the basis for their decisions. And I will also call on every individual board member to do likewise and explain their decisions until the next election. Twenty-one point two five percent is not an insignificant change. It's the difference between my family stays in Woodridge or we have to move. It's the difference between residents believing in our system of laws and local government and losing all faith.
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
Okay, in the last minute shifting of the developer, I just want to note he did not change the height. And to his repeated, I don't want to over represent, quote unquote. I sincerely hope you saw the Lockport resident lecture, like, letter, uh, pictures and video of the problems left in his wake there at the Prologis site, including the berm where you can't see the trees that were planted through the weeds. And with all due respect to, um.
Time's up, ma'am.
The sprinkler system does not maintain.
Next speaker is Dr. Andrew Wise, Superintendent of Center Cast School District sixty-six.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Andrew Wise. I'm the Superintendent of Center Cast School District. I'm joined in attendance by board members Lillian Rasso and Glenn Olson. First and foremost, thank you for your public service. Um, I have a great deal of respect for anyone who serves our public in a leadership capacity. I've been contacted by parents about the proposed distribution center to be added off Lamont Road. Student safety is important to the District sixty-six Board of Education inside our schools as well as outside our schools. We understand students travel to and from school through a variety of mediums, including walking and biking to our three school campuses. Knowing that sixty-five percent of our students reside on the west side of Lamont Road and need to cross Lamont Road heading east to attend our three school campuses. The District sixty-six School Board strongly opposes the new trucking distribution center, which will significantly increase trucking traffic on Lamont Road until there is an agreed upon safety measure put in place at the intersection of Lamont and Plainfield to ensure safe travel for students across Lamont Road. I have been impressed with the communication I've received from your village administrators. I appreciate how personable and informative they have been. I truly appreciate CA Ventures reaching out to the school district this week with proposed solutions. But with our schools opening tomorrow for both in-person and remote learning, there are just. just hasn't been enough time this week to vet the process. The District sixty-six Board would respectfully request an opportunity to sit down with C A Ventures and the DuPage Department of Transportation to determine whether safety measures proposed can be implemented and will be implemented at the intersection of Lamont and Plainfield Road before withdrawing our statement of opposition. On behalf of our students, the District sixty-six Board of Education, thank you for considering this request.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Kristen Jerome.
I'm at ninety fifteen Coppergate Road in Woodridge. And thank you for your time tonight. In the previous Plan Commission meetings, the applicant has continuously compared this development to the one by Prologis in Lockport, saying he encouraged the commission and residents to go and look at how well that turned out with the buffering and screening. So I did a visit, and it is drastically different from what is being proposed here. I'm an architect in the industrial field, so I decided to put together a sightline study comparison of the two developments based on the civil drawings available on the website. Now, there's been a few adjustments, and I've adjusted these numbers in the next paragraph based on what has been shown tonight. Both facilities have a fourteen-foot screen wall on the truck court as well as a ten-foot to fifteen-foot berm, depending on the number I heard. But I'd like to point out that the grade at the Lockport warehouse sits twenty-two feet lower than the residences', whereas the Woodridge site actually sits eight foot six higher than the residences'. This means that Lockport has a thirty-two-foot berm on the warehouse side, whereas Woodridge only now has a six-foot, six-and-a-half-foot berm with a ten-foot fence on it. The Woodridge warehouse is also twenty feet closer than the one in Lockport, based on the adjustments tonight. The applicant also used a specific sound study from Prologis as an example, saying the Woodridge design they did is exactly the same thing. They both have fourteen-foot screen walls, but they failed to mention the thirty-two-foot berm advantage that Lockport has, which I think would block sound much better than the six-and-a-half-foot berm with a fence on it that's being proposed here. So my point with all this is, in constantly comparing this new development to the Prologis-Lockport one, C A Ventures has made a gross misrepresentation of what the residents will be experiencing. In short, for these two developments to be remotely comparable, the site would need to be lowered by thirty feet. That's thirty feet lower for the grades to be comparable. You can see the massive berm in this picture that I took of the cross-section at Lockport, and you can also see the sightline study, which I'll admit needs to be slightly adjusted. But it shows from our Woodridge site how visible this warehouse will be in the residents' backyard, not from the property line by the Dunham Road easement, from their backyard and from their second story. So my questions are, how can we justify the approval of this when the continuous comparison was such a misrepresentation?
Thirty seconds.
And how do you explain the discrepancy in the sound study when the sites are vastly different? The last thing I'd like to mention, if you look at the pictures at the top, even with the extreme measures Prologis took, you can still see the warehouse from the neighborhood. So imagine if it was thirty feet higher and twenty feet closer, like this one's being proposed. I urge you to vote against this. Thank you for your time.
That's, yes. Okay, next speaker is Sebastian Jerome.
My name is Sebastian Jerome. I'm at ninety fifteen Coppergate Road. First of all, thank you for your time. I come to you today in opposition of this proposal. I am a Woodridge resident and an architect with my own firm. Throughout my career, I have requested variances in relief from other jurisdictions, and times that I was unsuccessful was when the board felt that my proposal would set a precedent for future projects. C A Ventures stands before you today, asking for a twenty-one and a quarter percent relief to the height, that's eight and a half feet, and for a point of reference, that's six inches shorter than the height of a residential story. Is this not an instance where the developer is asking for too much? I ask you, would you grant that much relief to any of these residents if they wanted to build a third story on their homes? This proposed relief will place a perceived forty-eight and a half-foot tall building the size of five football fields in your residents' backyards, and a fifty-one and a half-foot tall building as perceived from the proposed sidewalk on Lamont Road. Zoning bulk regulations are aimed at keeping developments in harmony with each other and their neighborhoods. By granting C A Ventures this relief, you are not keeping with that ideology. This is a dangerous precedent that will encourage further development of the same caliber along this district and in other parts of the village. I urge you not to set this precedent and listen to the residents that are pleading with you. Vote no. Thank you.
Next speaker is Denise Jacobazi.
The address is twelve forty eighty-third Street, Downers Grove. I'm in the affected, directly in the affected area. I've been a resident on eighty-third Street for forty-one years. Twenty-one years ago, the Village of Woodridge forcefully annexed and rezoned our property on, you know, this whole area. We were against it. I mean, we bought our house, it was always, DuPage County, when it was unincorporated, also had earmarked their development for commercial. But then a church wanted to go in, and they forcefully annexed us. So, you know, we were devastated. But now, it's twenty-one years, they've already started building commercial. Okay, so for the past twenty-one years, developers rezoned, whether we wanted to be annexed or not, for the past twenty-one years, developers have signed contracts with us and our neighbors so over the, for commercial development. And every time, the Village of Woodridge won't approve the development. You've ruined our property values as a residential area. No one will purchase our homes to use residentially. We are now Woodridge residents for twenty-one years, and you have no regard to what you have done to our property values. We are stuck. We can't sell residentially because no one wants to live in a house zoned commercial. No one could get a mortgage if I went to sell my house. You can't get a mortgage on a residential house that's zoned commercial. You can't even get a home equity line of credit, because when you go, because mine was, you know, I want to apply, they come out and it's commercial. You can't get a home equity loan on your house if it's zoned commercial. They won't even go do the paperwork because it's zoned commercial. So you've ruined our properties. Okay, so I've had many times to have developers come in, and every time, the village wouldn't approve the development. My neighbors, too, all along eighty-third Street. The one lady's been trying to sell for, you know, now she finally died, and their family's still got the property. You can't even sell it. We can't even leave. So we've had many times, and they've been turned down. I've had contracts, I could have sold my house for top dollar before the economy crashed in two thousand nine. I had several cash buyers. Okay. So anyways, a lot of people are misinformed about what's going on. If the village, okay, they had a comprehensive land use plan for all these years. You know, time's up. You know, time's up. You're either going to do a commercial or just buy our property, and we're going to be out of there. You've ruined all of our lives. I know everyone's against it, but you have ruined our property values, you've ruined our lives. I can't sell my house and retire and move.
Oh dear. My name is Sue Selander, and I live at eighty-one forty-one Meadowwood Avenue, Woodridge. So we've been through this, and there've been some changes made, but I'm going to go with what I had to say. How many of us, residents, village officials, staff, and even developers would oppose, would not oppose a large spec warehouse with unknown tenants to be built where they live, especially if they backed up to it? That being said, I am appreciative of the fact that you allow us to express our opinions at this meeting. I will try to be brief. This is a spec warehouse with a request for relief from the village height requirement. The developer has stated that future tenants will probably not have the need for the forty-eight docks, or that it won't create a large volume of truck traffic. If that is the case, why do they need the building to be taller than code, and why would the board approve this relief? To compound my frustrations, there was an absence of sightline illustrations in any of the agenda packets that had been shared with the public. This was an important illustration that this board needs in order to make this decision and see the true impact on the residents and the community. In the end, how does a towering building like this fit into our community? That will be our perspective from both Lamont Road and the neighbors who border this structure. It's very difficult to stand here today in opposition of our family and friends who are trying to sell their property within this O R I district. Back when this rezoning occurred, we stood in support of them at City Hall. Obviously, our efforts failed back then. These were their homes that Woodridge was making decisions on, and we wanted to support them. I personally feel that I should have done more to keep this conversation going regarding this area, ever since these last few warehouses have come to light. While I don't know if it was something that we could have been active participants in, many of the opposing residents had offered to be part of a positive dialogue with compromise for a predictive solution to win, to create a win for the residents, sellers, and the village. But this would have required the involvement and working knowledge of the village officials to have stepped in between the warehouse proposals to initiate the zoning changes, and that didn't happen, which makes me disappointed in all of us. Over the past few years, I have seen you make decisions, sometimes struggling with a yay or an nay, and I have respected you for that service to the community. I know that this is one of those days, and I would ask you now to choose to reevaluate your vision to determine what can be done for a positive development in the Lamont Road corridor that can benefit all. The last thing I'm going to leave you with is this tiny soundbite of what it's like to sleep with your windows open in the summer or in the winter when the leaves have fallen. I'm not trying to be dramatic, but this is a little bit of what we hear occasionally. It's just a little, little bit of it.
I've been thirty-two-year resident of Woodridge. Our home is directly behind it, as Sue said. I appreciate this opportunity to ask the village board to reject this proposal. We live in a great community that allows us to share our voice, and I thank you for that. I know much time and energy has been put into this proposal by so many, but you all know this is not right for the community. I want to thank Trustee Martinez and Mayor Cunningham for your lifetime commitment to our community. Both of you participate in the ninety-five Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, which redefined the future of this property that we're discussing. I also want to thank Trustee Krusek, who was involved in the two thousand seven Comprehensive Plan, which, again, reaffirmed what was going to be done on this. You guys have unique perspectives and vantage points of what was expected to be built there. And I hope you listen to what you, you're, from that vantage point, you don't forget that. Reviewing those comprehensive plans, I do not believe this development is what they had in mind. Well, a potted building is an example of what was planned for the property. I believe your plans were to bring jobs and commerce to the Lamont Road corridor while maintaining safety, security, and quiet enjoyment for the neighbors and the community. The development will only fulfill, this development will only fulfill a small part of that goal, while falling short of the true important, important ones. At an earlier Planning Commission meeting, Chairman Press Piorca urged the Planning Commission and the staff to readdress the Lamont Road corridor zoning. He, too, was on the Steering Committee with Trustee Krusek in two thousand and seven. I can only infer from that statement that he may not believe that this development is right either. It is simple for you to reject this proposal. Our standard requires that a building be less than forty feet in height. Staff has illustrated that there's an oddity in our calculation and how we do it, and that this causes it to be forty-eight and a half feet. I respectfully disagree that it's an oddity. I think we chose that standard for a reason. We wanted to control the perspective height of the structures that are in our community because we want them to blend in with our community. They would, they would have chosen a floor-to-ceiling measurement standard if they really wanted.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Yeah, I'll get done. The developer himself told us at the Planning Commission meeting that this building will appear forty-eight and a half feet, and they've said it again today, do not allow this deviation. I want to end with something simple. The opponents are fighting for this proposal so they can leave our community. Okay? We, the opponents of this, were fighting to stay in the community. I hope you understand that, and I hope you vote against this and deny this proposal.
All right, I believe that concludes in-person public comments. We'll now proceed to the virtual public comments, and Mr. Green is going to take it from here.
Thank you, Administrator Stonich. I do believe that most of our virtual attendees have been through this process before, but just for the benefit of any of you who may have not been, I will go down our list here in order. Please do not make use of the raise hands function that only serves to throw off the order. Everybody on this list will be given an opportunity to speak. I'm going to begin with those who are joining us by phone, and again, as Attorney Pat stated earlier, especially if you are joining us by phone, please try to stress the need to identify yourself at the beginning of your comment. So the first person I'm going to invite to speak is the phone number ending in nine seven two zero. Phone number ending in nine seven two zero. I will unmute you. Can you please identify yourself?
And again, for those who will be speaking through the virtual portal, I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds left and that when your time is up.
Phone number ending nine seven two zero. We cannot hear you. Can you please try pressing star six on your phone? We're having some difficulties there. I will come back to you at the end. The next person that we will try is phone number ending two six zero eight. Phone number ending two six zero eight. Can you please star six your phone and identify yourself? Phone number two six zero eight. Hello, we can hear you. Can you please identify yourself?
Hello, good evening. My name is Peter Hanton. My address is fifty-eight fifteen West Ninetieth Place in Oak Lawn. I'm a union construction worker, and I spent a large portion of my youth in Woodridge and particularly in the area in question. I wholeheartedly support the Lamont Road project. The truth of this matter is that the proceeding was inevitable. It's honestly shocking that it hasn't occurred sooner. It's public knowledge that. It's public knowledge that these properties being discussed were annexed by Woodridge in nineteen ninety-one and zoned for light industrial facilities. CA Ventures is now the fourth developer to enter negotiation with the lots in question, all of whom have met resistance to devise the zoning law. Almost every property on the Lamont Road has now been developed, with the exception of a very few in the center, which contain some crumbling houses and ill-maintained structures and overgrown vegetation. Some fearful residents have made some baseless claims about the horrors that will follow with unsupported numbers and few facts, but the businesses along this strip have brought prosperity and positive impact to the community over the years. And the contractor, CA Ventures, has been very cooperative with the demands of the residents. This development would only benefit the neighborhood and bring thousands of jobs, especially in these uncertain times, between the contractors and permanent employees of this facility. So again, I'm just asking for you to support the Lamont Road project, thank you.
And the, the next person on our list this evening is going to be the phone number ending four-seven-seven-three. Phone number four-seven-seven-three, if you can please press star six on your phone, and let us know if you can hear us. The person on phone line four-seven-seven-three, can you please star six your phone and identify yourself? Four-seven-seven-three, can you hear us? All right, we will come back to you. The next phone number on our list tonight ends in five-six-one-one. Five-six-one-one. Phone number five-six-one-one.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, can you please identify yourself?
Yes, thank you. My name is Kelly Weber. I'm formerly Maida, and I currently live in Aurora. However, I grew up in, in, and my family has resided in Woodridge, that area, for more than half a century. And they're going to continue to reside in the Village of Woodridge. Throughout the decades, we've watched this village grow and adapt as they were propelled forward with things like property annexations, which we've heard about today, tollways being put in, put in, widened roads all over the place. We saw the park district buildings and pools being built, and the subdivisions popping up, shopping centers and restaurants popping up all over the place. I could go on all day listing out all these big changes that Woodridge has experienced as they expanded to be one of the top a hundred largest cities in Illinois. That's really pretty impressive and important for the Village of Woodridge. And that's clearly been due to the demand for growth and the village's vision for the future that they've progressively worked towards for many, many years here. I respect and appreciate the level of attention and work that the entire Village of Woodridge staff, the plan committee, the board, and mayor has put into the cycle of this Lamont Road project proposal. Having said that, I sincerely hope that the board has been able to properly evaluate the facts of this proposal objectively, because I find it very disheartening to know that these opposing residents have made politically motivated accusations and threats towards the village staff and elected officials. The main concerns of this opposition are based on hypothetical situations. They can't really truly be quantified or properly determined until there's an application of tenancy submitted for this proposed development, which there isn't. That would be the time to identify and deny proposed tenants based off of their use plans. I just want to say that I commend CA Ventures for taking a holistic approach with this proposal, by providing their willingness to ensure that the village's requests and requirements are met while also showing extra care for the privacy of surrounding residents and the overall impact to their quality of life as well. I encourage the board today to support the plan commission's recommendation and vote tonight in favor of this final site plan approval. Thanks a lot for your time, consideration, and the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you. The next person here on our list tonight is the phone number ending in five-three-one-eight. That's a phone number ending five-three-one-eight. If you can please unmute yourself and identify yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, my name is Karen Hanton, formerly Karen Maida. I'm at fifty-eight fifteen West Ninetieth Place in Oak Lawn. And I am in favor of this proposal of the development on the Lamont Road. I'm disappointed to hear so much opposition of this project. I grew up here, and I can tell you, we all preferred farm fields, horse and motorcycle trails, Christmas tree, and horse farms. However, we didn't let that interfere, but we accepted and we adapted to the many changes throughout the years, which made this area what it is today. And if we allow the fear of the unknown to take over our feelings, then there would be no progress anywhere. These property and homeowners have worked their tails off for years, and it's time to release them of this paralyzed state that they are forced to be in by not being allowed to sell their properties and move forward. Again, the zoning has been ORI for decades, and they are not allowed to add structures or do much-needed home improvements. They deserve this, and CA Ventures deserves this project. CA, your presentation is impressive, and you've been so accommodating to the residents' concerns. So, I ask that the village abide by their zoning rules and pass this proposal. And for the surrounding residents to have faith that this will be a positive development for the community and that they too can accept and adapt to this. So, thank you for your time, and stay safe, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person we'll be inviting to speak is the person with the phone number ending in seven-six-eight-one. Seven-six-eight-one. If we can hear you, you can identify yourself.
Hi, everybody. My name is Andrew Kelly, I live in Darien, Illinois. The reason I'm calling today is to tie together two of the things folks have already said in a way that can get you to think about some of the things you're going to have to be dealing with in the future. The first is the concept of sales tax revenue coming from the retail space that is wonderful on Woodridge. The second is the concept of precedent. How what you do now will either handcuff you or free you to make decisions in the future. Everybody knows that the conversion from retail space to warehouse space is a challenge that is limiting sales taxes and will be one of the major challenges for municipalities going forward. In the next one to three years, you're going to have to confront Amazon. They are in a potential deal with Simon Group to buy up the unoccupied J.C. Penney and Sears stores. There is one of those properties right now at seventy-two hundred Woodward Avenue. What you do tonight will affect what happens if Amazon comes through your door asking to make that retail space, which will provide you sales tax dollars, whether or not it becomes a warehouse. What you do tonight will determine whether or not a potential landlord decides that, you know, I may as well convert this retail space and these tax dollars to warehouses going forward, because it's easier for me, and it doesn't make a difference to me, because I'm not the one that has to take the sales taxes. So, keep in mind that not just the CPG, which is a reason in and of itself, but sales taxes, precedent, and what you will have to deal with, deal with on a going-forward basis when the trend of warehouses, retail space to warehouses comes knocking at your door, and what that legal precedent means for you as a village when you have to address the trend. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. The next person on our list this evening to join us virtually is Amanda Bonacante. Amanda, if you can please unmute yourself.
Yes, hello?
Great, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Amanda Bonacanti. I'm at eighty-one twenty-nine Basswood Lane in Woodridge. I am a Woodridge resident. I have a five-month-old baby. I am extremely fearful for this development and oppose it a hundred percent for several reasons. One of my main concerns is the issue of adverse health effects due to the large number of increasing cars and large diesel trucks that will be added to an already high number of cars that pass off eighty-third in Lamont. In your packets, we have sent you the following information. In the state of California alone, diesel particulate matters contributes at thirty-five hundred premature deaths, thousands of hospital admissions, asthma attacks, there's several respiratory systems, and the loss of workdays. The worst part about this is it's extremely harmful for children who have higher rates of respiration. I am in Timbers Edge subdivision, which is right off eighty-third, which is right in the backyard of this development, and we have over two hundred children in this area. The multiple air toxic emissions study found diesel exhaust is responsible for seventy percent of the total cancer risk from air pollution. A study by the NRDC says lung cancer risks are ten to a hundred times greater than anything that would require warnings under Proposition sixty-five. In Riverside Study, this recommended a buffer zone of a thousand feet, not three hundred or three hundred and thirty as planned, and pointing docks away from sensitive land uses. Intermittent noise, even at low levels, contribute to mental health issues, loss of sleep, lack of REM sleep, increased anger, and aggression. The U.S. Energy Information Administration, the EIA, estimates in two thousand and eighteen diesel fuel consumption in the U.S. resulted in emissions of four hundred and sixty-one million metric tons of carbon dioxide, the greenhouse gas. From a recent two thousand and twenty article in the New York Times, heavy-duty vehicles are the largest mobile source of nitrogen oxide, a blue, second, hi, thank you, linked to heart and lung disease. This is not what I want for my family. We moved to Woodridge from the city to get rid of a similar situation. We couldn't stand the noise, the smells, disrupted sleep, and pollution anymore. We love this area, and we never dreamed of something so invasive that would be built on the Lamont Road, which is literally in our backyard. We thought whatever went up there would be more, keeping smaller buildings already there that are situated farther from homes. Thank you for your time.
Okay, the next person on our list this evening is Anne Perry. And if you could please unmute yourself and confirm that you can hear me.
Hello?
Perfect, we can hear you, thank you.
Hi. My name is Anne Perry, and I live at eighty-two thirteen Meadowwood Avenue. I just would like to say that I'm glad the building is thirty-seven feet further away from residents, but that will not make a huge difference when you consider all the backup beeps that are over a hundred decibels. Backup beeps are designed to be piercing, to get attention at decibel levels above those that cause hearing loss and to cause alarm in humans. They do not dissipate with distance, and in the developer's own words, "sound will carry." To quote William H. Stewart, former U.S. Surgeon General, "Calling noise a nuisance is like calling smog an inconvenience. Noise must be considered a hazard to the health of people everywhere." Noise has been linked to rise in blood pressure, heart disease, it affects mental health, is responsible for sleep disturbances, and that is something that we can look forward with these dock doors two hundred and seventy-five feet away from our homes. Dock doors also typically remain open, so there's noise from inside, forklifts, machines, conveyor belts, pulleys, cars, trucks, every day, all day, we will be hearing this noise. Also, I would like to just address that we, there are already a lot of trucks on eighty-third street. I live right by there. I see a lot of trucks going down that street already, going into the Darien warehouse, sometimes, sometimes just going elsewhere, but I do think you can expect more truck traffic. And if this ends up to be some kind of an e-commerce business, there's going to be continuous traffic in and out all day and all night. Having to wake up in the middle of the night to call the police is not a way for us to have to live. Noise can also, has been called the new secondhand smoke. It's a public health issue. It decreases property values. This entire project has already cost a person who put their house on the market down the block from me. Someone was interested in it and heard about the warehouse and said, nope, they're not buying it, because they will never buy a house that's, that's near a warehouse. And this is what we can look forward to. I cannot fathom that anybody would vote for something that would cause harm to your residents. We would be losing money on our biggest investment, living with constant worry about harmful pollution, calling the police all the time. I do feel that we deserve better.
You have thirty seconds, ma'am.
And thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person that we will bring in to speak is Anthony Bonacante. Anthony, if you can please unmute yourself and confirm that you can hear.
Hello, can you hear me?
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I want to start out by saying, giving our condolences to the Bailey family. We do, our prayers and thoughts are all to you guys. My name is Anthony Bonacanti, I live at eighty-one twenty-nine Basswood Lane in Woodridge, Illinois. And I'm here to just let you know some of the findings that I found while going through the public record. After the last couple of meetings, I heard a lot of people talking, and there was some disputes about where people live. So I went in there, and I spent all week deciphering information. I wanted to know who was for it, who was against it, where they lived, and what their information was. It was all in the record. So, what I found was ninety overwhelming, ninety-two percent were against us. And of the eight percent that were for, most are landowners. Two, a couple on Middle Barrier are the only ones who actually are residents that are going to be affected by this. Everybody else is, like, we've heard from people from Oak Lawn and Aurora. Like, we appreciate them, but they're not affected by this. And in fact, I read in this public documents, I read an email from a gentleman, I won't say his name, but he's for this. And I read it verbatim, "The only people that should have a voice in this matter are the ones that live, work, in the village proper, and are closely associated with the area in discussion. A perimeter of concern," now, he never went in with a perimeter of concern is, but I'm going to go ten miles, I'll just say ten miles. It is ludicrous to think that people that live outside the perimeter of concern can defeat a plan of development when they most likely do not have vested interest in the matter. That's what he said. Well, perfect. When going in there for the people that were for it, Aurora, Tennessee, come on. Oak Lawn, now, I appreciate the guy from Oak Lawn, but he's, he's a union guy, he's looking for jobs. I don't, I don't, I'm not a union guy. I want that property to stay as it is, pristine. I'm, I'm all about that property staying pristine. Now, when, there was another debate about the change document, and where those people from, on that change petition. I went in there, I looked at every one of them, three hundred and fourteen were from Woodridge. Now, I signed it, and they said I was from Donner's Grove, I'm not. I live in Woodridge, I vote in Woodridge. Now, I'm going to be watching, we'll help people vote for this on this board, and the mayor, and that's going to influence my vote. So I just hope that you guys understand that, but three hundred and fourteen were from Woodridge. Hundred and fifty-five were from Darien, hundred and seventy-two from Donner's Grove, that's me, and I'm from Woodridge. Thirty-four from Bolingbrook, now, that's a little bit far. Lamont, there's some people, Naperville, some people, six hundred and eighty-seven, if you just take away everybody else, but we're doing just three hundred and fourteen. Sixty comments on the petition saying why people are outraged about this.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'm asking the board, are you going to listen to big business? Are you going to listen to people that are leaving or not even in Woodridge? Now, I feel bad for you people, you can't sell the houses. But to me, it sounds like you're all bailing on Woodridge. I'm here to stay, and I'm going to vote, and I'm going to listen to how everybody's voting on this. So, you know, and there's the species, the endangered species, and I'm glad you guys did the study, but if we keep thinking about, we're not going to worry about these, these species until there's a danger, that's how we get in this problem.
Your time's up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list this evening is Corey Mofield. Corey, can you please unmute yourself and confirm that you can hear me?
Yes, this is Corey. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. My name is Corey Mofield. I live at twelve oh one Chesham Court in Woodridge, Illinois. I live across the street from the properties directly impacted by this that back up to the proposed development. And I guess I'd first of all ask that the board and the mayor review the memorandum that I submitted last night regarding compliance with the code. I am an attorney, so I'm a bit of a stickler for procedures and following proper protocols. So bear with me as I go through this a little bit on how I believe that approving this project and development would be directly against the code. I would point to you first at nine fifteen-five of the village code as far as the procedure for granting of variation. And that states very clearly that affirmative findings of fact shall be made as to all the standards here and after set forth. And then there's four very basic standards that are set forth that this board nor the plan commission can find via an affirmative finding of fact. Now, I'd like to rewind a little bit there and say, an affirmative finding of fact means that it is upon the proposal to provide evidence of these. It's not upon the community to provide a negative against these. However, if we look at the, everything that's been submitted, all of the commentary this evening and over the last several months regarding this project, you'll see how there really just is no affirmative findings of fact to meet these standards. Going through, through these, these four standards, the first one right off the bat, the physical condition of the premises are unique and do not apply to the neighboring premises in the same district. Well, even previously this evening, the developer admitted that they never considered a smaller development. They, they never considered, stated anything that there was something so unique that it justified a structure of this size of the height that is proposed here. So it's just right there. The first pillar of those requirements falls. I'm going to move even down a little bit further, just to the fourth standard there. The granting of the variation will be in harmony with the intent of this title and will not be detrimental to any neighboring premises. Let that sink in for a minute. Listen to what has been said this evening. Read what has been submitted over
Thirty seconds, sir.
the last several months. There's no way that this, this board can find that approval of this development will not be detrimental to any neighboring premises. If we look at the harmony of this intent of this title, again, I would look, I would point to you at nine dash one dash two of the village code, which clearly states the purpose of the title of, of the zoning ordinance. In no way can you find an affirmative finding of fact.
Your time's up, sir.
Thank you.
The next person on the list tonight to join us virtually is Daniel Santiago. Daniel, if you can please unmute yourself?
Hi, I'm Daniel Santiago. I'm a scientist. I live on eight-two-one-seven Meadowwood Avenue with my wife and two young kids who at the moment love to play in our backyard. This project may change that. I urge the village board to vote no to this project and to please consider rezoning the area. With an area of just under 250,000 square feet, this construction will bring significant devastation to our scarce environmental resources, requiring removal of over 1,000 trees and destruction of five wetlands. In addition, air and noise pollution, as well as traffic accidents, will further increase as a consequence of the trucking activities. Recently, I sent a letter to the village board, which can be found in the agenda packet, page six to eight, attachments eight and nine, where both attachments are reports generated by a state-of-the-art peer-reviewed software suit from the USDA Forest Service. In my letter, I presented an analysis on the estimates of the annually sequestered CO2 and removed pollutants by the trees in two areas, namely, number one, the area of the proposed construction, and two, an area 11 times larger that surrounds the proposed warehouse site and represents the immediate neighborhoods, neighborhood affected by the warehouse. The results show that per acre, the trees in the warehouse area capture carbon CO2 and remove air pollutants at a rate nearly three times higher than the surrounding neighborhood area. Regardless of the tree classification in the CA Ventures Street Preservation Plan, satellite images show a thriving ecosystem that is part of our community. If these streets are removed, we will lose those benefits. Nowhere in the developer's plan is addressed how the environmental devastation and trucking activities will worsen the air quality. Worse air quality leads to negative effects on the health of us residents, which are some of the hidden costs of developments, developments just like this that are normally not taken into account. I know that the developer would need to pay a fee of $147,000 to DuPage County for the removal of five wetlands with no known Woodridge environmental fees. If approved, the developer would just be paying their way out on negatively affecting the health of us residents rather cheaply. I'm really sorry that the village has put the landowners in this terrible position. I understand that they want to sell their property, but it is our children and we who will be forced to live with the constant air and noise pollution from the truck exhaust. I'm willing to work with the landowners, I'm willing to work with the landowners and village in the search of a project that truly benefits our community. This project, however, is not for Woodridge. Again, I urge the village board to vote no to this project and please consider rezoning the area. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list for this evening is Ed Luterno. Ed, can you please unmute yourself and confirm that you can hear me?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yep, my name is Ed Luterno. I'm at six-twenty-eight Hillcrest in Donners Grove. Previously, I lived in Woodridge for 15 years and I'm very familiar with the area as well as the residents. I own one of the parcels involved in this development project. I purchased the property approximately 15 years ago. At that time, my plan was to develop a self-storage facility on my property. I requested permission for the city of Woodridge, only to be denied. They stated the property is owned ORI and we don't allow self-storage facilities of any type. The real disappointment came approximately a year later, when just a few properties away from mine, the self-storage facility was built in the ORI district. The land was similar in comparison, as well as the building design, almost identical. So you can imagine my frustration after making such an investment in Woodridge. Not really understanding what the reason was for the bias, I decided to lick my wounds and move on and sell my land and invest in a more business-friendly city, which I have currently done. I listed my property for sale. I've joined the other neighbors along each side of me and we formed a team and as well as a concept that would annitably sell our property and better your community. In the last few years, I've had numerous legitimate offers. Five separate developers have put together detailed and expensive proposals that have been presented to Woodridge only to have the developers walk away from their intentions. Each time, the reason was the same. The Woodridge residents were very difficult to work with, plus overreaching policies that quickly became cost-effective or cost-prohibitive, I should say. They left the table after spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. The developers didn't close their doors. They simply moved their investments into the surrounding towns that are business and tax-friendly. In fact, these cities are thriving while Woodridge remains stagnant. CA Ventures has gone above and beyond.
Thirty seconds, sir.
is reasonably expected of a developer to address the public's concerns. CA Ventures has shrunk this building size, moved setbacks, landscape burns, plus attractive fencing, all to mitigate the local concerns. They are very experienced developers with a proven track record. Each developer that attempted to develop my parcel has walked away unduly punishing me
Your time's, your time's up, sir.
financially.
Your time's up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on our list for this evening is Fred Deuschman. Fred, if you can please unmute yourself and confirm that you can hear me? Mr. Deuschman, if you can hit that button in the lower left of your screen, that unmute button and confirm that you can hear me? All right, it looks like you've unmuted. Can you confirm that you can hear us? Mr. Deuschman, it sounds like we're having some difficulties on your end with the audio. Maybe you can try one more time? All right, we are going to come back to you for another round at the end there. Okay, the next person on our list this evening is Jim Varcalis. Jim, if you can please unmute yourself and confirm that you can hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
All right, I sure can.
All right, my name is Jim Varcalis. I live on twelve thirteen Mansfield Street. So first of all, can play you guys a little bit of sound. I'm not sure if anybody on this board here, right, people on the CA Ventures thing, let's go ahead and hear that sound at three o'clock in the afternoon, or maybe on a Saturday in the afternoon, we're having a party with your kids. Great sound, isn't it? Over and over and over again. Now, CA Ventures, by their own quote, by the way, which I found fascinating today. The quote was, their, their graph, their sound graph, we just pulled that off the internet. Well, if you pull it off the internet, that has to be true, right, CA Ventures? Because we know everything on internet is true. That was a laughable comment. So if they're just pulling that off the internet, they have to really question their traffic studies. You know, before, during the board meeting, their traffic studies, they said it was a low pedestrian area, which is funny to me because it was March and it would be probably a low pedestrian time. Every time I've gone out now on about eighty-third Lamont Road, I have seen either families, people on bikes, or children trying to cross that road. The world's changed. School starts tomorrow for my kids. There's plenty of families. I've seen that the districts had the superintendent, about 60% of the kids live west of Lamont Road. We're trying to figure out how to get our kids to and from school. They're going to be taking buses. Now, people are trying to find other ways besides buses. People, we tried biking to work, we're biking to school. Now, we're dealing with increased truck traffic. They're saying one or two trucks a day. It's nonsense, or one, two trucks an hour, it's nonsense. They're building a 50, you know, well, now it's a 48 truck bay unit over there. Don't believe our traffic studies. Obviously, we weren't right into pedestrian traffic. We're not close to that. So the other thing is, you know, listeners, CA Ventures, like, sounded, sounded like trucks are, you know, super clean and they're not noisy and there's no these problems. A gentleman from CA Ventures has gone now to Pat say that, and I don't get this, he's not qualified to talk about the US movement of electronic engines. Let me, come on, that was all spin. That was exactly what they do. They electronic movements. It's ridiculous. So I'm asking committee, let's ask the board to do what the planning commission didn't do. Number one, put the residents first, not investment landowners. Put the safety and the well-being of the residents and the children first, not the development companies, bottom line. Put the environment and wildlife first, not truck depot.
Thirty seconds, sir.
way that benefits everyone. No more.
All righty. The next person on our list this evening is Stephen Young. Stephen, can you please unmute and confirm that you can hear me?
Yes, okay.
We can hear you, thank you.
My name is Stephen Young. I live in one-two-two-zero Mansfield Street. And I'm opposed to this development. I'm not like somebody from Oak Lawn, Aurora, Tennessee, Donners Grove. I live in here and I have two children. One is 10, another one is 13. So the 10 years old is going to Prairie View. So according to Dr. Wise, our superintendent, District 66, about 60, I think it's 65% leave west side of the Lamont Road. And I seen it with my own eye and my children also told me, people actually bike and walk to school because there's a bike trail on the eighty-third street, the south side of the eighty-third street. If you look at the map I sent to the trustee, there's some bike trail, it's called Southern DuPage County Regional Bike Trail. People actually bike there and go across the Lamont Road. So if this is just a common sense, if the developer, the development have 48 loading dock, it's going to be increased. It's got to be the increase of the semi-truck. Have to think about the safety of the children and the pedestrian crossing the Lamont Road and also the school bus going. There's a reason why Dr. Wise is there. So they're so busy. If you want to come in today to talk, to talk, we all the trustee, because tomorrow is the first day of the school for District 66. So this is very important matter. I hope you all, you correct whatever the plan commission did wrong. And another one thing is, I don't, I don't agree is the variance to ground the 48.5 feet. Our village code is 40 feet. If you look, look into that, it's an eight and a half feet difference. So it's a 21% difference. I know, I know that last, maybe last night, the developer giving like swung the, the square footage from 250 to 242,000 square foot. This is only minus 4%, minus 3.4% for 50 loading dock go down to 48 loading dock. It's only 4% difference reduction, but we already given them a 21.3% increase, saving them like $2 millions of the cut and fill the hallway, all the dirt from the last meeting. So don't, don't be like.
You have thirty seconds, sir.
Don't be distracted by the 3% or 4%. Look at the big picture. Look at the safety of the children's first. Because we, we are live here and my children will continue to go to the District 66. And my, and my, and my older one to go, go to the DGS, they're all gonna, going to use the Lamont Road. So increase the semi-truck in the Lamont Road is not a good option for everybody, for the children, for pedestrian, for all, all the resident, Darien and, and Woodridge. I thank you for your time and hope that all of you will vote no for this development. I'm not against.
Just time is up, sir.
Thank you very much. It's the type of woman. Thank you.
Okay, the next person on our list for this evening is Lauren Mofield. Lauren, if you can please unmute yourself and confirm that you can hear me?
Hi, yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again. I don't want to repeat everything that I've already brought to this council and the plan commission.
Ma'am, please remember to identify yourself and your address.
My apologies.
That's okay.
Lauren, twelve oh one Chesham Street, Woodridge.
Thank you.
Um, I do want to highlight a few items. The Woodridge staff has already compared this development to those in the International Center in a report. Even though the village's staff's own analysis, they have determined that this building is comparable to one of the areas that is not zoned ORI. And tonight, there have been frequent references to this being an industrial space. This area is zoned industri, is not zoned industrial, it's zoned light industrial. Additionally, Kim has made comparisons earlier in the presentation on the square footages of this warehouse versus others that are on Lamont Road. This is a misleading representation since this is solely based on square footage and did not factor in height or number of truck bays, key variables that are concerning for this specific warehouse. The next closest development is only 75% of the square footage and is not in Woodridge zoning. It is in Darien. Buildings in Woodridge are 42, 36, and 8% of the size of this current proposed warehouse. A few new topics that I'd like to bring to your attention. This past weekend, my husband and I were driving down I-55 and noticed a warehouse south of I-55 in Darien. And it was a warehouse looking for a tenant. It was coming in at about 150,000 square feet with 25 docks and it's currently sitting empty. How long do you think a much larger warehouse would sit empty? Additionally, in the FAQ's provided by the village for preparation for this meeting, it clearly states that the typical usage of an area zoned ORI. I'm wondering if someone can point out which item on this list requires 25 to 50 truck bays in order to operate. Is it the church or the office building? Or I mean, maybe it's the bank or the medical building that would require this amount of truck traffic for the proposed site? Even if we look at the uses that require a special permit, we have the following items. Is it a school or a florist or a barber shop? Um, a hotel or a drugstore? I consider myself to be a leader in both my personal and professional lives. And being a leader means never having to ask somebody to do something that you wouldn't do yourself. I would like to ask that the board ask themselves before they vote on this warehouse, would you want this warehouse in your backyard? Would you want this warehouse in your neighbor's backyard? Would you purchase a new house?
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
House was, you're going to be your neighbor. If you answered no to any of these questions, I don't know how you could approve this warehouse in good faith. You are the leaders of the people of Woodbridge, the very people that this warehouse will impact the most. Please keep this in mind as you cast your vote and I urge you to consider voting no for this warehouse. Thank you very much for your time.
The next person on our list this evening is Ross Vidal. Uh, Ross, if you can please unmute your microphone and confirm that you can hear me.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. My name is Ross Vidal. I live at twelve oh four Longford Street, Woodbridge. I'm coming for you tonight as a concerned citizen, growing proposed development along Lamont Road. I've been a resident of Woodbridge for six years. My wife and myself along with our two children originally moved to Woodbridge to be closer to our families and our place of employment. What we have found since we have moved here is a wonderful community from our neighbors, the school system, to the police department. We found a community of people that care about one another. I've often remarked to my family and friends how, how, how fortunate we are to be part of the Woodbridge community. And I believe that the environment of this community is the result of the direction this board has taken our government. Is with this thought that I wish to appeal to you by reason for opposing the development of a warehouse along Lamont Road. If you do consider rezoning this area. I'm a mechanical engineer by profession and I worked in heavy industry for over twenty-five years. In fact, I cannot express to you the safety hazards that can come with industrial complexes and the negative effects they could have on the surrounding community. It's my understanding that the developers are building a warehouse with no intended tenant in mind. If this development is approved, the village and the residents will have relinquished any control of what businesses or light industrial process will reside at this facility. From the planning meeting, the developer stated that the facility we built to accommodate potentially up to fifty truck docks. The developer also stated at the planning meeting that the truck traffic in and out of the facility will be limited to five trucks per day. The statement is simply untrue as how these facilities operate. Regardless of the amount of truck traffic, OSHA regulations would require sufficient lighting of a loading dock and parking area to illuminate the area for the safety of the drivers and the personnel working at the facility. This would mean having lighting on top of the building where light poles extend above the building to provide sufficient illumination for the parking lot and loading dock areas. Also, with regard to sound levels of the complex, OSHA regulations require the businesses occupying the building to implement procedures to protect the hearing of the personnel that work at the facility. However, we need to keep in mind that the OSHA regulations for decibel levels might be acceptable for industrial environment. However, they would not be acceptable for what you or I might consider sound levels for acceptable quality of life. Furthermore, as a future tenant or tenants are uncertain, the environmental impacts cannot be determined. The proposed area for development is located on and around wetlands. These areas are valued for their positive effects on people and wildlife. The light industrial process occupies the building. The residents will have little recourse to control.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Or contamination. Once contamination of the environment has occurred, it can never fully be restored. It's for this reason, light pollution, sound pollution, environmental pollution. And I am opposed to this structure being developed. It's a detriment to the community, not a benefit. It's a potential to put people's health, lives, and well-being at risk. The decisions you and the board make tonight can impact the lives of the residents in a positive manner or the message of quality of life that so many people have worked hard to achieve. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person on our list this evening is Scott Crick. Scott, if you can please unmute yourself.
Hello. My name is Scott Crick. I live at twelve oh nine Chesham Court in Woodbridge. Uh, the one thing that I keep hearing about this development and the concern of most of the neighborhoods, neighbors in this area. And the reason why we are against it and oppose this very strongly is is, as much as they're gonna try and accommodate the noise from the trucks, these backup beep tones when the trucks are reversing is just gonna reverberate throughout the neighborhood. It, sound goes everywhere and that's what the developer says. It goes in all directions, including up. And most of the homes in this neighborhood, the bedrooms are up on the second floor. So the sound is gonna rise from these truck beep tones that'll be going off twelve to fourteen hours a day. Uh, early in the morning, late at night, uh, when people are asleep. And it's gonna go right through everybody's bedroom windows. Uh, height of this building is such that it's way too tall and it's gonna lead right into people's bedroom windows. One of the reasons to deny this structure is just based on their height relief that they're requesting. If the regulation requires a forty foot, then we need to enforce that they stay within the forty-foot height limit. Uh, there's no way we should allow building bigger than that. It won't blend in with the surrounding neighborhood. And it's gonna just be a big monstrosity. It's gonna stick out like an eyesore. Uh, you know, these beep tones are exempt from the noise ordinance. So as much as they try and muffle the engine sounds with any barriers, those beep tones are that high piercing noise that we're all familiar with, that you just cannot get away from. And it's required to be there. So each time the truck is backing in and out of those docks, you're gonna hear that sound. And there's no way you could build a barrier to muffle that. So I'm strongly against this. The configuration of this warehouse puts the docks closest to people's backyards.
Thirty seconds, sir.
If they had the truck dock, you know, facing Lamont Road, that would certainly mitigate it, but it's not part of their plan. So, you're, and I understand we got to appease the few neighbors who want to move out of there, but you're gonna alienate entire subdivisions that butt up against this uh, development uh, and just ruin the entire neighborhood. So I ask that you all, uh, take a look at this closely.
Time's up, sir.
And please, uh, vote against it.
Alright, uh, we have one more person on our list this evening and then we will have three people who we need to re-attempt contact with due to technical difficulties earlier. So the next person on our list this evening is Sue Neely. Sue, if you can please unmute your microphone and confirm that you can hear us.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
My name is Sue Neely. I live at six twenty-one Berkshire Court in Downers Grove. And many people don't remember that there used to be an airport back there. And the people that are declining this in development don't realize that they could actually put a heliport on the top, which I'm all for, because I'm a pilot. And I think that this improvement needs to move forward uh, to clean up the area on Lamont Road. And, um, I want to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to attempt the, uh, the three from earlier that we did have difficulties with. I'm sorry, it's like we are at four now. Uh, the first person that we will attempt is the phone number ending nine seven two zero. It's a phone number ending nine seven two zero. Can you hear us? Can you identify yourself?
Yes, my name is Jeremy Weber.
Thank you.
I live at three ten Kimberly Court in Aurora. I'd like to point out that where somebody currently resides has no bearing on their current or future vested interest in the village of Woodbridge. Having said that, my in-laws live in Woodbridge. And I've enjoyed visiting and shopping and exploring this great village. I've been on the other side of this whole argument. I'm in support of this project. My family owned property and a very similar situation happened with like this. Um, we saw half a dozen attempts at developing this property that was right up against my family's property, come and go. The last one to give a go at it was a lot like C A Ventures. They listened to the residents and they made adjustments to them, like a berm and a cedar fence and many others. My family was not happy at all when it passed, but we're optimistic people. I'm happy to say that ninety-nine percent of our fears never came true. There was no mass exit of residents, no loss of value in homes. We coexisted together and still are. I feel that after this project is completed, this twenty-first century building will be yet another feather in this great village's hat. It'll bring jobs that are sorely needed. C A Ventures have gone above and beyond with this project. And that is why I support this project and the decision of the planning board. And I urge you, lastly, to pick facts over feelings. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, we'll next give another attempt to the phone number ending in four, seven, seven, three. That's a four, seven, seven, three. Can you hear us? Can you hear us? Alrighty, we are gonna have to move on.
Hello?
Oh, there we go. We can hear you.
Hi, my name is, my name is Marion Maida, eighty-two hundred Dunham. And I have one other person here that's going to speak, my husband, when I'm done. And I was also asked to speak for Angelin and Bill Kohler, who are co-owners of one of the properties. We are all in favor of the C A industrial development. The planning and zoning department and staff have worked diligently on this project, checking all aspects of the village codes and requirements and how this project fits in. The planning board approved it and sent it to the village board for final approval. Therefore, we believe that when approved, this will be an improvement that will benefit the village and the entire community on many levels. The opponents need to realize that traffic and noise will not decrease in or near any city. Progress only adds to it. If they are so opposed to progress, they can move to a rural area away from the noise and traffic. Or they can plant more trees in their own yards to eliminate the pollution. They can also, oh, where am I?
Just, just.
Uh, they also complain about the, uh, people from Tennessee and Aurora and Oaklawn. These people are our children. And they grew up here and they are directly involved. And now I'll turn it over to my husband, Stan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is Stan Maida, eighty-two hundred Dunham Road. And I am a property owner within this, uh, O R I site. Uh, a little prog, very little progress has been made in this area over the past twenty years. Uh, this development, I believe, is a twenty-one, twenty-first century uh, type development. It's gonna be neat, clean, and orderly. I've seen these buildings and other places that are, uh, Illinois here, and they look that way and they uh, they are a plus to the communities uh, like Woodbridge. Uh, Woodbridge needs this tax uh, support and base. It's gonna bring, and over ten years, it's estimated it could bring three million dollars. And it's twenty times over what they would be getting now. Uh, uh, I kindly say, a lot of these people's fears will fade. The opposition sees no compassion for the owners that have had this property all this years under this uh, requirement of O R I. And there's, I see their selfishness that they see. Uh, communities develop and they adjust. That's evolution. And evolution should move forward in their minds and in places like Woodbridge with the community adjusting for everything. We have adjusted since nineteen sixty-eight when we lived there. It was farm country. It was unincorporated. You could do a lot of things out there and we've seen all these homes come in. And the dust and the stuff that was created and the noise, we've heard from uh, uh, their buildings and stuff that is going on there and we don't complain about it, okay? We've heard mowers going, commercial mowers going that they have hired. We had, we've heard all kinds of stuff out there. There are garbage trucks. We can hear them. We don't complain about it.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Natural.
Thirty seconds.
Uh, I hope the village board takes us into real consideration this time and vote yes on this thing, so we can move forward. Uh, there's a lot of people that haven't spoken, that live in this area. Uh, they feel the same way. I've talked to them. Thank you. All have a good day and a safe day.
We are gonna try Fred Deutschman one last time. Uh, Mister Deutschman, can you unmute yourself and confirm that you can hear me? I can see that you are unmuted. It sounds like you may be having a microphone issue. You can try that one more time, Mister Deutschman. Alright, it looks like, uh, we are having technical difficulties on your end, Mr. Deutschman. I do apologize. Uh, the final person that we have in line tonight is, uh, Mike Stamenkovich. Uh, Mike, if you can unmute yourself, confirm that you can hear me. Mrs. Stamenkovich, can you hear me? It actually looks like you do not have a microphone connected, so this, this won't work unfortunately. Okay, yep. Alright, Madam, that does conclude the, uh, people in line for public comment tonight.
Mayor Cunningham, if I may just conclude that also added to the record, we received obviously a healthy number of public comments in written form over the last couple of weeks. Uh, those have been, copies of those have been provided to all the board members. They have received them. All of those either have been or will be added to the official public record as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Administrator Stoneage, and to our planner for, uh, helping us coordinate all of the, um, feedback and, uh, messages from all of our neighbors in Woodbridge. And on behalf of the village board, the village and myself, we want to thank everyone for all of your diligence and your great care. Um, I'd like to invite our, um, village board members at this time to see if you have questions or comments or any feedback.
Madam.
Yes, trustee Martinez.
Sorry. I would, I listen quite intensely to our neighbors and our residents. And to some degree, I understand some of their concerns. Um, I would like, uh, to make a request to the developer. This may take, uh, take us beyond today. But I like the consideration to be given to reduce the size of this building by twenty percent. size of this building by 20% and the number of truck doors by 20% additionally to the, to the reduction that has already taken. I'm very concerned about the noise level of the trucks especially, and I'm also concerned about the traffic. We have not received comfortable feedback on what kind of traffic to expect. All is based on previous calculations, but we don't know who's gonna be using the space. I think by reducing the space more, it would allow the developer to add more trees out on the west side, on what would be the east side of the berm. And not at the berm, excuse me, of the retention pond, for further noise reduction and pollution and all these other things that landscape can help with. So my request would be to CA Venture, please consider reducing the space by 20% to about 200,000 square feet, and the number of doors below 40 total. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Martinez. I'm gonna go, yes, please. Yes.
Trust, Trustee Abbott. Yeah, Trustee Martinez, I appreciate your comments, and I guess, just maybe before we get to the square footage, is, you know, we tried to present significant amount of data based on studies on similar projects or, 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 you know, and all based upon people or experts in their field providing the information. And I know it's not possible when you don't know who the tenant is, know exactly what you have, but we tried to provide data so people could, you know, basically make their own conclusions on where they think the traffic is, and that's the best you can do on a speculative building. So I would say that to reduce the square, the reduced ability by 20% is not possible for us financially. It would, does not work at all economically for us, for what the price of the land is, for the offsite improvements. So that's just not an option for us to do that for under this current situation of the economics of the transaction. Again, we, my perspective is, and I, and I feel for the residents, I've heard what they had to say, but the project is, we're meeting everything regarding zoning, except obviously I can for relief on the building height, and we've tried to go well beyond code and provide buffering and screening and, and, you know, studies by experts on noise and then traffic. And we think we've tried to be very, very transparent of what we presented here. And I agree, I remember what Kohler said is, I think the broad eyes, I mentioned when we started this, I've done dozens or dozens, at least a dozen projects next to residential. There's, there's hundreds of projects of industrial developments that transition to, and next to residential projects. It's a natural transition. And I can't say all of them are perfect, but, but I know from my experience of doing this that the projects I've done have very little impact on the residents. I'm basing this on facts and data and studies by professionals. This isn't just people speculating. I can tell you that that's what I've done my whole career. And that's the best I can, the best we can present. And, and I hope the board sees it that way. But again, that's why we tried to, we dug in so much, provide so much data and bringing expert people into the, into these discussions, so people could really make, you know, a decision based on facts, not just people saying, I know there's gonna be a lot of noise. We, we got a letter of recommendation from the city of Lockport. I mean, I have a lot of respect for Ben Benson, but he didn't write me a letter because we're friends. He wrote me a letter because that's actually what happened on that project. And that's a 200 acre development that is gonna have 2 million. It currently has, has a million square feet of, that's, you know, that's gonna be, and SNX factored, is a 24/7 operation. So that, that's been a project that's, that's worked great for that, for that community. And we hope we have a chance to do the same thing. So, so I guess, Trust, Trustee Martinez, I guess I talked a lot about the question, but that's just not feasible for us to reduce the square footage or, under the current economics that we have, so.
Trustee Abbott?
No, sorry.
No, that's, okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Trustee Abbott, I'll go after you.
Thank you. I had a question for Director Porter. Do we know the number of cars that go in and out of the building to the north where skeleton keys located?
That the LaPata building was part of, also part of an annexation agreement, and staff was, was not able to locate a traffic impact study, which makes us think that maybe one's, one wasn't provided during those negotiations prior to the construction of that building, unfortunately, Trustee Abbott.
Yeah, maybe I wasn't clear. What I meant was, do we know in actuality how many cars go in and out of there every day?
No, oh, I'm sorry. No, actually, we don't, sir.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Trustee Page.
My question is for you as well, Director Porter. Can you talk to us about the variation in height? So I know that code is 40. They're seeking a variance of 48. Is that the entire building, or is that just the front near Lamont Road?
Due to the topography, it will come in as, it would be, the, the elevation differentiations are beginning at the front and sloping westward. So...
Sloping down westward or sloping up?
Sloping downward. And unfortunately, I don't have the full topography. Tom, if you're still on here, can you assist with that? If you're familiar, if you, if you can recall that particular, the topography of the site, I don't know if you've seen the grading plan, but it does slope backward, it slopes westward.
I can, I can answer that. Basically, Lamont Road is about eight lower than the average height of the, is eight feet lower than the average elevation as it sits today from the site. So that's the reason is, the, our property, our building actually comes up, the roads come up to actually get to what's called the average elevation of the property. I think one thing I want to stress is that people talk about, and there's no question, we, you know, it's your code. And we're asking for relief on your code, and I don't want to debate if it's the right code or not. It's your code, and we live with your code. And, but what I want to say is, when we reduce the size of our building, and by adding that additional birmingham and heights, that basically screens this building. So whether the building is a foot over, a three foot over, the concern should be, can I see the building? And if you can't see the building, I don't know if the extra three feet or four feet, in my opinion, does that really matter? The reason we need that height is, a standard, a commercial grade investment, an institutional grade industrial building is 32 foot clear, which means from the bottom of our, the, the slab to the, basically our joists are steel, and then you have your, basically this steel you have to hold up the roof, and there's the building pitches. So you're always gonna have a building at 36, 37, at the highest point, 38 maybe, you know, I'm just saying in general of how that building is. But the building slopes down, so it's not all 37 feet high. It slopes to the, it slopes to the north and to the south, so it's lower on, on those ends. But my, my point being is that there's just no way we could make that work based on what the elevations are of this site and build this building. It's, it's, it's not, it's not physically possible to build a shorter building and meet the code on that, or meet the, the current height requirements.
That part is correct, Trustee Page.
Mayor, I-
Yes, please.
I have a couple of questions and just, just maybe clarifications. And I know I've asked these before, but I think for the benefit of everybody that's on the call, with, in regard to the schools and children walking and riding their bikes. It is my understanding, and I want to make sure that I have this correct, that all the children that go to that school from Woodridge have access to free bus service. Is that correct, or am I incorrect on that?
Yeah, Trustee Blair, I'll take that one, Administrator Stonich. It's our understanding, yes, that students are offered bus service.
Okay, so if they choose to walk, or if the parents choose to allow them to walk, they, they do still have something available to them to ride the bus, and they would not have to walk. I guess, Director Porter, we heard a lot tonight about zoning and how it should be rezoned. Can you just go over the, maybe very briefly, the protocol, because it's not as simple as it sounds?
I would probably have to also pull in Attorney Pat on some of the legalities as it relates to it. So the properties are currently zoned ORI. So if, if magically this entire corridor was rezoned to residential today, the existing owners still have vested rights to bill to ORI. Is that not correct, Attorney Pat?
That's correct. That's correct.
So as long as these, these owners own these properties, they have the right to develop ORI type of uses. So the process will be, now, if one of the property owners decided that we would like to come in for rezoning, the property owner could very well come in and apply for rezoning and go through the process, which will include plan commission, public hearing, and village board consideration if the owners wanted to come in as well. But that will be based on them deciding to, to request a rezoning of their, their own land.
But it's not the village that could just change, it has to come from the property owner?
I would say, Eric Pat, if the village decided to just do a mass rezoning of that corridor, and please correct me if I'm wrong, again, the existing owners still have vested rights to develop as ORI. That does not, the village rezoning this corridor to residential does not remove their owners' rights to develop for ORI uses. Is that not correct, Attorney Pat?
That's correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
And one more, I guess this is for the developers, if you would, gentlemen. There was several people that referred to the Lockport development and how the comparison to Woodridge was inaccurate. Can you just please review that for me? Because I'm a little confused on the numbers and the differences.
Okay, well, so maybe just, I'll start with, there was two different comments. There was pictures shown of Lockport, and I want to make it clear that I entitled the property, so I got all the zoning done with the city of Lockport, and then I left Prologis. So Prologis started that project. I left in summer of 18, and they started grading that project in summer of 18, essentially. So I can't speak to what happened after I left. So people talked about the maintenance and the trees. I, I don't work there anymore, so I can't comment what, well, I think I have great admiration and respect for Prologis. I think they're first class institutional owner. So, you know, maybe something is slipping, but I still, but anyway, in regards to the, the comment when, when the plans were brought up, I can say it's a, it's a, first of all, I want to be clear, I don't think I ever said it's exactly the same. They're exactly, they're different properties. The, it's, the topography was different. One thing is very similar, though, when she talks about the building, the berms. We didn't build, I don't know what she said, 30 foot berm. We never built a 30 foot berm. What it is, is that the property in Lockport from north to south dropped down, there's the, the ditches or the, can't remember, the creek now. So we just cut our road in. The houses were already higher than, the houses were already higher than where our buildings were gonna be anyway. So we just cut down, we just cut down into the dirt, and we did make some berms there, but we weren't, no way we were building anywhere near a 30 foot berm. We were probably doing two to three foot berms. And there's also areas in Lockport where, where we couldn't do birmingham because we tried to keep existing vegetation and trees, and we just put fencing up. So it, it's a complete misrepresentation that we, or, first off, let me step back. If anybody's ever dealt with me, I'm 100% transparent. I never would present something that I don't believe in the facts I'm presenting. So I, of all the comments I heard, I can feel for the residents and their homes. I can, I'm sympathetic to their concerns. But it bothers me greatly when somebody's saying that what we presented is inaccurate. That, that is the most troubling thing out of the two hours I've listened to the, to the comments. And we, so my, my perspective is what I learned in Lockport by the noise studies and the, and the, and the traffic, we tried to incorporate those same best practices here. So again, this is similar, like going back to Lockport, what is similar is, the homes, the homes in the west are set at lower elevations. So when you look at the grades, it has that same effect. When you're sitting in that yard, it will feel, I don't wanna say exactly the same as Lockport. I, I look at engineering drawings, but I'm not seeing, I'm not, it's not built yet. But it's gonna be a very similar feel that your, your house is lower, it's set lower. Then we have our berm, then you have the fence. So I, I think it's, I don't wanna say it's identical. It's not. They're different properties. But it's based on the same principles that we're trying to accomplish at Lockport.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Trustee Cruz.
First, I want to thank Director Porter and Planner Green for all the work that they have put into this. Also, the two gentlemen from CA Ventures, in particular, for the concessions that they have made and trying to make sure that they put together a project that could get done in this area, which is obviously very, very difficult for a number of reasons. Kim, in particular, I think you did a great job of trying to get everything that we could for this, from the developers here to meet the resident concerns. I don't know that any project that we do here would necessarily be satisfactory. We've heard from people that want a smaller building. We've heard from other people that want to leave it exactly like it is. I feel greatly for all the people that live in that neighborhood that would like to keep it exactly like it is. At the same time, people that are there that would like to sell their properties, I don't know how we can really be stopping them time after time. So sometimes I think when we're looking for something to be done, we're looking for it to be perfect. Perfect is very, very difficult to get to, if ever. And I just don't see that we're ever gonna find perfect here. And I also don't see how we can just continue to let it sit there. This is not a pristine area. This is not a pretty area when you drive past it, as a matter of fact. So I'd like to hear if anyone else has anything else to say, but I plan on voting in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members, please? If no one else, I'll go ahead. I just have a few comments and a couple of questions. So I do appreciate sincerely all the work that the developer and the owners of the properties have brought forward, plus all of the concessions and meeting with residents and neighbors in the community, and bringing forth a development in an area that you've been waiting and, and the owners have been waiting for over 20 years. However, the impacts are great. This is not an easy decision, and, you know, I also thank immensely Director Porter, Planner Green, Administrator Stonich, Attorney Pat, everyone at the village that has helped preparing over 800 pages of materials on this development proposal. The building height has always been a concern for me. And what I'd like to ask again is to please clarify, I've read it so many times, and I guess I, I don't know, I'm just questioning, and I want just a clarification again on the building height and with regards to our code. The calculation, you know, what it looks at, the grading plan, the setbacks, the slope, but I'd like to get, and just get another confirmed answer to that.
Phil, pull up this slide, please.
Thank you.
Mayor, as you can see, based on how the village defines height, which is in our code, it's the vertical height. Better yet, Phil, can you share your screen and go, do you have the code open?
I can definitely do that. Give me one moment.
Oh, I think I have that, actually. But please, for everyone else.
We're gonna deviate from the presentation, the show. We're going to deviate from the presentation, the show. That way, we don't have to toggle between controls, though. And definitions.
There we go. Let me just go ahead and do a new show.
Blow that for me, please. Old eyes, old eyes.
There we go.
Yeah, it's okay if it's highlighted, just or just zoom in on that area. So for the view in public and for our trustees, and highlight it. This is an excerpt of our code. This is actually from our website, in which it's defined building height. The height and feet shall be taken as the vertical distance from the average grade measured at the two points, this is very technical, where the front building setback line intersects the side lot lines to the highest point of the building. In determining height, parapet walls not exceeding three feet in height from the roof surface, penthouse roof tanks, bulkhead chimneys and similar roof structures should not be included unless the aggregate area, aggregate aggregate area of such structures exceeds one-third of the area of the roof of the building. This is how the village code defines building height. This is how we calculate it. So we're calculating building height, go back to the presentation, Phil, for a empty site in order to determine what the building height will be for a proposed building. Scroll, zoom in a little bit for me. So as you can see, this is a grading plan. Although you see this tentative building there, because that's that's how you submit the grading plan to staff, you'll see all of those slopes and contours at the front half where the lot line, so when you look at the entire building, when you see the two lot lines intersects with intersects with that first red dot, we read this plan, which you probably won't be able to see, to determine what that grade is at that point. Then we figure out what the grade is in slope where those two lot lines to the south meet and come up with that number and get the average, which is seven hundred and seventy-one feet. The highest point, which was being towards the back off of this particular page, comes in at eight hundred and nineteen point five feet. To track that amount, seven seventy-one from eight nineteen point five, average, which was the average grade, it says that the building is going to be forty-eight point five feet in height. And again, this is due to the topography issues that these properties have. This is a flat site without a lot of slope grad- graduation. It would calculate thirty-eight feet, which is the actual true height of the building.
So the actual height?
Of what was instructed is thirty-eight feet. But we don't calculate height that way.
Right, I know. So if I'm in a different community, are they calculating the same way we do?
No. This is a, this is, this is, this benefited us when we were still developing early on.
Okay.
A lot of communities are are have a vertical height, roof, foundation to roof, and they probably would exclude parapets and all that other stuff. This is the calculation we have to undergo. And this, this is also for single-family homes as well.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that because that's what my notes are. But I I just wanted to be sure to make that a point. And, you know, I guess one thing, just looking at this proposal and and then there's a lot of, you know, what ifs, and we don't know who the tenants will be, et cetera. But spec buildings are being built. I've seen it, I've heard it in my career world. I've dealt with that. So that that's not something that is new or there's just many times that developers build a spec building, something in mind that they know the market is either attracted to or that the market is looking for. But my question is more, if it is not on these properties or in this area, if it is not this development, what, and we've talked about this, you know, what are either possibilities? What could the future look like? What could we be addressing going forward?
Is that a question for me, Mayor?
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
So under the existing zoning, O R I right now, what could potentially come before you as a hotel as a special use? In accordance to our village code, a hotel with a minimum of a hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet can go in by right with an eighty-feet height. A hotel less than a hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet in size could go in at sixty-feet height.
Okay.
Office buildings as a office building with a square footage of a hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet as well as, I don't believe the office is a special use, but they can go in at eighty feet in height. So we have some variations where we can have some uses come before you that can be much more intensive and much more higher in height by code.
Okay. And then lastly, I know that we just talked about this a moment ago, about the comments that have been made with regards to rezoning. I guess I'm going to probably look to my right and ask Attorney Pat again.
Um, Mayor, before you move on, did you want to talk about those scenarios?
You know, if we could, I would, I would like that. Maybe helpful to everyone.
Pull up that graphic.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
I'm sorry about that.
No, no, I'm glad you jumped in, thank you.
Let me just bring that up real quick.
Thank you.
Okay. So Mayor Village Board, on the screen before you, the mayor requested that we create a couple of scenarios that may illustrate to the mayor's question before, how we may see development progress along LaMont Road corridor based on two different scenarios. So the first scenario that we would see in line with the comprehensive plan would be a series of consolidated lots being developed in masterplan style. So on the screen before you are a number of colored boxes. The orange box here would represent the proposal before you all tonight. The green boxes would represent various developments along that corridor that are already under construction or in one case nearing completion along the LaMont Road corridor. So down here, you have box number two, which is the Lapata Building. And that one is the Home to the Skeleton Key Brewery and a number of other businesses. Box number three down here is the Midwest Badminton Facility, and that is nearing completion. Box number six, as you see up here, is the Cube Smart Facility, formerly built as Lockup Storage. The yellow box up here, box number seven, is the aforementioned Panatoni Building in Darien, completed construction, currently inhabited by Thailand Top. And then the blue boxes, numbers four and five, represent theoretical potential development under this unified lot plan. So what staff did, you know, scenario planning is somewhat of scientific guesswork, I guess you could say. We looked at the market trends that dictate the types of building one could see when taking into account lots of this size. So the consolidated lot number four down here is very similar in size to lot number two, which is the Lapata Building. So we believe you would see something similar in size and scope down here. It's a nine-point-five-acre lot. The market would seem to suggest we'd get something of a twenty-five percent lot coverage. So potentially something in the realm of, you know, around that hundred thousand square foot mark like you have up here with the Lapata Building, considering that likely be stormwater detention in the rear there. Lot number five would be larger in scope, similar to the subject property in the case before you this evening. There has actually been proposals brought forward to the village, although never formally submitted, that would suggest the market would call for another building around that hundred and sixty to hundred and eighty thousand square foot mark. I will state that on this lot, there are actually some wetlands kind of up in this corner that would actually more likely have to be developed around. So you would see likely a slightly less intensive use on this lot and definitely significantly more screening. Now, looking at this and the the impacts that would likely have on access, we believe that with consolidated lots, including the access points already put in along LaMont Road, you would end up with around ten curb cuts total along LaMont Road.
Okay.
Moving down, and again, Attorney Pat can kind of chime in here as it as it relates to zoning. And Mayor, I think this starts to lead into your next question a little bit. This is the scenario wherein the landowners utilize their vested rights to develop in an O R I, under O R I restrictions and zoning code. But they would do so individually, and this would assume that all of these lots would be developed completely to code with no variations requested. So under this scenario, instead of those consolidated lots, you begin to see individual lot development, which would lead to somewhere in the range of around nine additional buildings being constructed. Now, again, taking that study of the pattern of land use and the the lot coverage that we could expect to see under this scenario, most of these lots range from four and a half acres to five acres. So we call that four-point-seven-five, right down the middle. And we would estimate seeing anywhere from thirty to forty-five percent lot coverage. If we take this Cube Smart up here, for example, that's one of the smaller lots. That is a four and a half acre lot, but it's very dense. It is at forty-five percent lot coverage, which is right up there towards the fifty percent maximum. So i- if we assume that that we'd follow these market trends of thirty to forty-five percent lot coverage, which would be consistent with necessary parking and stormwater detention and so on and so forth, we end up with nine sixty to ninety thousand square foot buildings. That does have significant impacts when it comes to access and traffic. So staff has created two different scenarios within this scenario as it pertains to access. The first scenario is demarcated by the green arrows would indicate very favorable access conditions for the village. So this would assume that these lots are developed, although individually with some level of of agreement between the lot owners to provide shared access drives, which is a stated goal of the village's comprehensive plan. We would end up with approximately nine curb cuts along LaMont Road. If, however, these lots were to develop at very different times, that would be impractical to enforce and potentially very unlikely, at which point we end up in the worst-case scenario of fourteen different access points. And conventional wisdom would would have us believe that likely the smaller buildings would potentially generate less traffic. The Midwest Badminton Facility down here at twenty thousand square feet, the approved traffic study for that particular development shows peak trip generation of around sixty-four vehicles in in the peak times. So obviously, the traffic generation is highly dependent on who's attracted. But I think it's just always important to bear in mind that the conventional wisdom of smaller is less traffic does not always apply in these scenarios.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I would like to, again, ask any board member, any further discussion? Questions? I'm going to ask Attorney Pat, please, to just review findings of facts and et cetera for the village board.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that part of the approval, because there are variations requested, make findings of fact relative to the four four prerequisites with respect to granting of variance, whether you find those to be satisfied or not satisfied. So if you're seeking to approve a project, you would have to find that all four prerequisites for granting of a variance have been met. And if you find any one of them have not been met, then not approve the requested variation. So anybody who is seeking to make a motion, whether to approve or to reject the application, should in fact include their determination with respect to the to the four prerequisites for the granting of a variance. I believe all of you have received something earlier today with some more specifics in that. Stonich sent it out, something prepared by Planner Green. Assistance with respect to specifics, I can certainly help in that regard.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions regarding the findings of that? Okay, if there is nothing further, any other general questions, comments, any deliberation?
Mayor, if I could, we, we, we have a lot of information tonight. And I mean, we've been reading it right along, we've got piles, but a lot of comments tonight, a lot to take in. I would be for maybe giving us time to contemplate this before taking a vote.
I can support that motion.
Okay. So we have.
If if I may, Trustee Blair, to Trustee Page's point, if you were in fact making a motion to continue, I'd ask you to continue to a date certain.
What?
Sorry, I'd ask you to continue to a date certain.
Oh, just request a continuance to a future date?
Well, you'd make a motion to continue to a future date.
Well, then I will make that motion to continue to a future date, to give us time to digest and absorb and give it all the consideration that it needs.
Well, it would have to be to a date specific, which would be the September third being the next meeting.
Continue it to the September. The motion would be then to continue it to the September third meeting.
Second.
Thank you very much. So we do have a motion in the second to continue this meeting until our next board meeting on September third. Going to ask our clerk.
Excuse me, Mayor, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
I just had a quick question for the applicant. I just wanted to find out if that was, if they were comfortable with that.
Oh, that's excellent point. Thank you, Trustee Cruzak.
We're going to get a favorable voter now. So, I mean, I I guess is, I guess I don't know how to answer. We obviously would like to to hear what the board thinks about the project. So, I mean, you know, I I guess I don't know how to answer that question. We we obviously would like to have the board vote today, but we'd like to get the, we would like support for the product, the deal. So Kimberly, do you have any suggestions? I don't really, I guess I don't know what to say, so.
Can you speak louder? The developer, can you please speak just a little bit louder for some of us?
Yeah, I mean, I said is we obviously, we we wanted support from the board to move ahead of the project. But so I guess I don't really know how to answer the question because, you know, if if the board needs more information, we're happy to provide more information if that moves us in the right direction. So I guess I can't speak to, you know, the more information they need, but we're we're happy to work with the board on what they need, so.
So if I could, if I could, sir, not to speak for Trustee Cruzak, but I think his question was implying, is there a contractual reason why you couldn't have a an extension until our next board? I know you want your answer today, but if there's not a contractual reason why.
There's no pressure on us, whether it's today or September third doesn't matter to me. We'd like a favorable ruling, and if we can provide more information to the board that gets us to that point, we're happy. we're happy to dig in, you know, whatever, you know, with it. Ms. Porter provides us some feedback to the board and additional information we provide, we're happy to keep providing more facts and more data. So I mean, obviously we're hoping to have a vote tonight and get a favorable vote. So.
Okay, that was actually my question, more or less. I think Attorney Pat said it better than I did, which is not, I'm sure you'd like an answer today, but there's no reason for you to, where you would have to, where the contract is up or anything like that.
That's, that's a correct statement.
May I ask one more question? With a continuance to the, should we vote to continue to the third? Do we just then take a vote or do we go through this entire process again?
If the matter is continued and recalled, then it's a public matter and on the agenda, any members of the public who would want to speak would have another opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, Trustee Abbott.
I had a question for Director Porter. Is regarding the number of cars that go in and out.
Excuse me, Trustee Abbott, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I have a point of order. There is a pending motion to continue that has been seconded that's on the floor right now. Is your question, doesn't sound like it's related to the motion to continue.
Well, I was going to ask whether there was additional information we could get from, from Director Porter. So I don't know if that's related or not.
Let's treat it like that. It's a, be able to answer your question.
Director Porter?
Information as it relates to what aspect of the traffic?
How many cars go in and out of the, it's, it's a building that has Skeleton Key and the other businesses.
So we can try to locate that. I know, I think I responded a little bit earlier. We will see if that, that was also part of a larger annexation agreement and so we'll see.
No, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm not talking about any studies. I'm talking about actuality, someone going out there with a counter and seeing how many cars come in there in the morning between six and nine or whatever. And someone with a counter there between, you know, 2:30 and six or three and 5:30, whatever. Is that, is that gettable? If it isn't feasible, then that's fine too. Yes.
Trustee Abbott, let us take, let us take that back and we will make an effort to get that. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. We do have a motion and a second to.
Continue this matter to September 3rd, 2020.
To September 3rd, 2020. Going to ask our clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Page.
Hi.
Trustee Hendricks.
Nay.
Trustee Blair.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Abbott.
Nay.
Trustee Cruzak.
Nay.
Madam Mayor.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
So the matter will be placed on the September 3rd, 2020 agenda.
Okay.
And it'll be again, subject to public comment for those who are still watching us.
Thank you very much, everyone. Again, on behalf of the village board, the village and myself, we want to thank everyone for your diligence and great care to all of our neighbors, to the developer, the landowners, our planning and development departments, our administration. We will be back to address this on September 3rd. And if there is nothing further, I would like to please ask for a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting of the mayor and village board for Woodridge.
Al, don't you have an omnibus to?
Yeah, we did. Yes. That's okay. Thank you so much. So if I could have a motion, thank you very much. In a second.
Second.
All those in favor, please sign aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The time is 11:21 and thank you all. We are adjourned.